Okay. Do I have to like lift it up? Is this good enough? It seems really far away. Okay. I'm sharing a mic. How is this testing? How is this? Is that good? Okay, normally we can hear ourselves. I can't really hear ourselves as well. Okay. Yep. Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, March 17th. It might be St. Patrick's Day. Yes, it is. We have a special meeting. It's 4:30. And I'll request the city clerk to call the rule.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz. Councilmember Yedder Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here and we're having a discussion. This is a study session on recent housing legislation. And before I turn it over to city staff, just a reminder to my colleagues, we're sharing the mics. So they're they're hot the whole time. But when you get ready to speak, maybe move it closer to you so that it can be picked up online. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager to introduce this item.
I'm going to turn it over to Nara Doherty, our legal counsel, who's going to give the presentation tonight.
Thank you, city manager. Good to see you, mayor and city council. Tonight, we are going to, I will be giving an overview of my personal favorite topic in the legal world, housing laws in California. As you all know, as elected officials, these have massively changed over the last 10 years and five years in particular. So I'm going to be hitting on some of the basics. The intent of the presentation is to give the council and any members of the public viewing an overview of what we are dealing with in San Rafael with respect to how we process housing development project applications as they come in. Part of the presentation will be on laws affecting multifamily and mixed use projects. And then we'll briefly go over laws affecting single family dwelling zones and single family lots towards the end of the presentation. Few housekeeping things. Well, I have a, I think I'll, if it's okay with the council and the mayor, I'd like to go through the whole presentation because some questions may be answered as we move through my slides. So if we can take questions at the end, if that's okay. And then I wanted to also remind the council that, you know, we're here to talk about the laws in general, not any particular project. We haven't noticed this meeting for any discussion on any particular projects before or anticipated to be coming into the city. So to the extent you can keep your questions targeted to general questions on the law as opposed to any particular project. I and the development and pro housing community, thank you. And with that, I will get started. This is an agenda, oh, sorry, Micah. This is an agenda of the laws, high level laws that we'll be covering tonight. I'm going to start with the most monumental law, the Housing Crisis Act, which amended portions of the Housing Accountability Act and the Permit Streamlining Act, and then also established some additional new laws. Then we're going to go into the state density bonus laws. Those laws have massively changed in the last few years. We're going to talk about SB 35, a law that San Rafael is subject to, not all cities are subject to. Then we're going to talk about AB 2011, SB 6, and those two laws were recently amended by AB 2243. Then I'm going to go into some single family dwelling laws. So with that, I'll start on the Housing Crisis Act. So this was a law that was passed in 2019. It kind of kicked off like the recent trends in housing development in California. The the law was stated to address the statewide housing crisis, and it made some pretty substantial changes to how we currently process housing development project applications. So at the outset, I want to mention a housing development project in California is any housing development or mixed use development that is two thirds square footage residential. The, the, one of the most important things that the Housing Crisis Act did is it created a preliminary application process. The preliminary application is set by state law. There are 17 pieces of information that developer submits. It's a much easier application to put together and submit than than developers' development application, a formal development application. A formal development application, as Micah can tell you in much greater detail than I, takes a ton of plans. You need your architectural drawings. You need engineer drawings. You need elevations. You need right of way information. A preliminary application, in contrast, like they often have their attorneys complete them and submit them. Once a preliminary application is submitted to Micah's department, all the housing development project vests fees and standards in place at the time of submittal of the complete preliminary application. So the idea behind this process was to give developers more certainty into what they could expect would be applied to their project when they got all the way to entitlement. Previously, before the adoption of the preliminary development application process, the laws in place at the time of entitlement applied. And so developers were often like having to adjust their projects as they went, or were finding out about new fees closer to or at entitlement. The Housing Crisis Act also prohibits the city from holding more than five hearings, including appeals, including any public meeting where their project is discussed once the project is deemed complete. So this means when we get to planning commission on a housing development project, we have to ensure that we are at the fourth hearing, not the fifth hearing, so that we can reserve an appeal to you guys if any member of the public or the applicant appeals the project. In in a very important change, the Housing Crisis Act also adopted new rules which prohibit the city from adopting almost any new standards, but it specifically calls out like the big development standards, height, setback, coverage, minimum lot area, sorry, minimum lot size and density. It prohibits the city from adopting new standards that would have the effect of reducing density beyond, below what was allowed or authorized when the Housing Crisis Act was adopted. So what does that mean? That means if we have a height standard of six stories in a multifamily district in the city, which allows, you know, your box to be a particular size, the city cannot reduce that height standard anymore through 2035 while this provision is still effective. If it would have the effect of reducing density, meaning a developer couldn't come in and say, well, you know, if you reduce your height to five feet, I can't put as many units in my box as I previously was able to do. You cannot reduce your height. And they would be, that would be accurate. The Housing Crisis Act also includes no net loss rules that apply specifically to protected units. So protected units are either naturally occurring or deed restricted affordable units. Generally, there are some exceptions, but generally speaking, no housing development project can displace or remove protected units without replacing those protected units. Meaning if a housing development, if an apartment building currently exists and has 10 low income units in it, and the developer is proposing to replace that apartment complex, they have to at a minimum replace that complex with 10 low income units. There's one exception to the general no net loss rules that I just described. And that is if you concurrently increase residential capacity elsewhere. So if the city, back to my height example, if the city were to decide it wanted to reduce height in in a zoning district, thereby reducing the residential capacity in that district, the city could concurrently upzone elsewhere to allow a replacement of that residential capacity. So we could say, we're taking out two stories in this area and we're increasing two stories in that area. You have to submit those changes to HCD and get their like unofficial approval, approval. The impetus behind that piece of the law was there were some trade organizations that came in and said like, this is going to stifle economic development. Like if we want a Costco to go in, you're telling us we can't ever have a Costco, which is going to, you know, massively improve economic development in our town. You're prohibiting, this law would prohibit us from seeking those kinds of commercial uses. So the legislature amended the law, the law to make sure that they could, cities could have that Costco example come in as long as they then adjust for an increase in residential capacity elsewhere. The Housing Crisis Act amended the Housing Accountability Act. The Housing Accountability Act is an old law. But one of the biggest changes it made to the Housing Accountability Act was to make a new rule that said any housing development project that complies with objective standards, meaning written identifiable standards that are not subject to discretionary judgment of a decision maker. The housing, if the housing development project complies with those standards, the city can only reduce the density of that project or deny it if it makes certain health and safety related findings, which are very hard to make. And HCD and the courts have emphatically chastised cities for admonished cities that it is very hard to make those findings. An example of development standards that we used to see a lot that are no longer applicable for the purposes of denying or reducing the density of a project are like historic preservation standards. A number of cities have standards that say something along the lines of, you know, the development has to retain the historic character of the World War II arsenal area. That's an example of a standard we have in one of the cities I work with. That standard can no longer be a basis to deny that project. What they can do is say, here are historic preservation standards that apply to your project. Siding has to be this material. Colors have to be this shade. You know, there's a way to adjust it. So San Rafael, along with many other cities, did adopt objective design standards last year to address some of these changes. A reminder with the Housing Accountability Act, it doesn't take away discretion of the of the decision makers. So for a project that is still subject to discretionary review, i.e. the issuance of a use permit, zoning amendments, things like this, the jurisdictions still retain decision making authority. SEQA still applies. And the city can still condition the project in a manner that it seeks necessary to offset impacts and to meet city standards. So this is a, this, the state density bonus laws are probably the most impactful laws that we've seen in the last few years. One is they've been greatly bolstered by a series of different laws adopted by the legislature over the last few years. And two, they used to be considered like confusing and they just weren't used as much as they're used right now. Part of the reason that they're used so frequently is, you know, one, developers are like on the know about state density bonus laws now. But two is they apply to projects that provide a percentage of their units as affordable. And almost every jurisdiction in metropolitan areas in California, and certainly in the Bay Area, already has an inclusionary housing requirement, right? So if you have any inclusionary housing requirement in your city, you are going to automatically be able to invoke state density bonus laws because you're already applying, you're already providing a percentage of your units as affordable. So in San Rafael, we have a 10% inclusion, low income inclusionary requirement today. A 10% inclusionary, 10% low income requirement, or by providing a 10%, 10% of your units at low income, you developer are automatically entitled to a 20% density bonus, one incentive or concession, and unlimited waivers. And I'll go through what that means. In other cities that have 15% low income requirements, which a number of jurisdictions in the Bay Area have, they get a higher density bonus, two incentives concessions or waivers. And I'm sorry, incentives or concessions and unlimited waivers. So in sum, what the state density bonus law does is, as I said, it, you provide, provide a percentage of your units and your housing development project as affordable to moderate, low, very low, or extremely low households, depending on how many, what percentage of units you provide and what your deed restricted income limits are, extremely low, very low, low or moderate. You get a percentage density bonus above base allowable density. So for example, if you have a low 10 dwelling unit and acre density standard in a zoning district and you get a 20% density bonus. Oh, God, I shouldn't have done math on the fly. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. You get 120 dwelling units an acre. Did I even do that right? Anyway, I'm a lawyer. I don't do math. You do have, so you have to meet that minimum threshold to qualify. And then the benefits you get are that increased density that I just horribly did the math for. You get reduced parking requirements. You get incentives concessions in a, in a number that relates to how many units you're providing at affordable levels. And then you get unlimited waivers. So what are, this is a, I'm going to come back to the stacking density bonus in a second. Let's actually go on to incentives. Yeah, next one. Thank you. So what are incentives and concessions? The number is based on the percentage of affordable units in your project. They are a reduction or modification of any development standard, design standard, zoning code requirement, other regulation, meaning a developer can come in and wave out of any requirement the city imposes on it. Incentives or concessions have to reduce, result in identifiable cost savings. However, case law has recently changed and is converted that requirement that the incentive or concession results in identifiable cost savings to a presumption in favor of the developer. The city has to disprove that the incentive or concession results in identifiable cost savings, which is very hard for a city to do. Cities don't have economists on hand and developers can, I've seen, kind of make any justification for waiver of a standard resulting in cost savings. It need not be a monumental cost savings. It can be a cost savings of $1,000. Waivers are, you get unlimited waivers. As soon as you qualify for a density bonus project, you get as many waivers as you want. And those are waivers from physical development standards, i.e. height, setback, coverage, minimum lot size, open space requirements, any physical development standards that would have the effect of precluding the development at the density that is being proposed and is allowed with their density bonus. So the way that works is, let's say, in my 100 dwelling unit and acre density example, they got a 20% density bonus. So they're now allowed up to 120 dwelling units an acre, but the height standard is six stories. And because the law is only an eighth of an acre, they can't fit all the units that they are entitled to in the box that they're entitled to with the six story height limit. They can wave out of the height limit and build as tall as they want to get their 120 dwelling units an acre on that eighth of an acre site. The math is not actually hard when you're like with a calculator, but. So that's how, that's how waivers work. Unlimited, you can get as many as you want. I'll go back one slide. There is new changes to state density bonus laws last year to allow a stacking density bonus that when you can stack two previous categories. So it used to be that you, with a 15% very low income project, meaning 15% of your units are deed restricted to very low income households. Those are households that are at 50% AMI. You could get a 50% density bonus. Separate from that density bonus rule, if you provided a 15%, or there's actually a new rule, sorry. There's a new rule that says, if you take that 15% very low income density bonus, that you, you get a 50% density bonus, you can add on another 50% moderate. Sorry, I'm sorry. You can add on a 15% moderate, that's 120% AMI density bonus that gets you to another 50% density bonus. So now you have a 50% density bonus from your 15% very low. Excuse me, you have a 50% density bonus from your 15% moderate. So 30% of your units are deed restricted. And you have 100% density bonus. So in that scenario, you take your 100 dwelling unit and acre standard and you get 200 dwelling units an acre. It's a massive increase. And this was a kind of shocking law to a lot of jurisdictions in the Bay Area and other metropolitan areas because 15% moderate is like not that valuable when, when property, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, the word valuable is a little strange word to use there, but the rents for a 15% moderate for a moderate income household are not that much lower than what we see for market rate households in jurisdictions like Marin County where the AMI is so high. And I think we actually went through this in the Northgate hearing where we were discussing like, what's the actual rent for a low income? That's 80% AMI household. It's not that much lower than market because of how high annual median income is in San Rafael. I'm in Marin County. We see the same in Santa Clara County, San Francisco County, Alameda County, San Mateo County, and then a number of jurisdictions down south. They see the same thing because their AMI is so high. Okay, great. I do want to reiterate something that maybe I didn't make clear enough that this slide reiterates, which is housing development projects, they're entitled to invoke state density bonus law. They get to wave out of local standards. They do not get to wave out of state standards. So that means they don't get to wave out of any building code requirements, including the fire code, including the electrical code. And they don't get to wave out of the fact that they still have to meet capacity needs for city utilities, like where a city owns water and sewer or special district utilities. So what the, the development at 200 dwelling units an acre still, still has to meet capacity requirements from MMWD and PG&E and the, and any local sewer districts to serve a development of that size. So SB 35 was amended by SB 423 last year. You guys are probably all aware of SB 35. This was a fairly monumental bill that was the first of its kind to say certain housing development projects no longer are subject to discretionary review. You city have to approve them ministerially, which means they are not subject to SEQA. There's a bunch of site standards that have to be met in order to be entitled to SB 35. And even more importantly, only certain jurisdictions are subject to SB 35. Those are jurisdictions that are not meeting their RENA requirements in the previous cycle or at mid-cycle showing that they are meeting their above or their market rate requirements as well as their lower income requirements. That was what SB 35 did. SB 423 changed SB 35 last year to create these sort of two categories of cities. There's the 10% category, 10% cities, and 50% cities. Now, what it says is jurisdictions that have issued building permits for enough market rate units have to ministerially approve projects subject to the previous SB 35 rules. They still have to be on an eligible site if those projects offer 10% of their units as very low income units. So the affordability threshold has now been reduced. As of this year, we are in that category. We are not issuing enough market rate units per our lap 2024 RENA mid-cycle APR, the annual progress report that was submitted, submitted to HCD. We are not subject to this next category, which is great. It means that San Rafael is producing as many lower income units as we are required to produce mid-cycle. So the next cycle is the 50% cities. This, I'm sorry, the next category is 50% cities. These are cities that haven't issued enough building permits for lower income units, and they have to approve ministerially projects that offer 50% of their units as low income units. We're not in that category as of June of last year. HCD reevaluates in June of this year also, and they can add or subtract cities from either of those two groups. So what that means for San Rafael is if a project comes in that offers 10% of the units as very low income units, or actually, I have to say, 10% of the units as low income units in for sale projects. So like in condo projects, it's just 10% low income for rental projects. It's 10% very low. And then the city has to ministerially approve the project as long as the project, and these are just the high level basics. There's a bunch of, you know, of course, the legislature throws in like 32 paragraphs of other exceptions. But at a high level, as long as the project meets our objective standards that we talked about previously, and they're paying prevailing wages. If those two things happen, then the project is approved ministerially and it's exempt from SEQA, meaning no traffic studies, no air quality studies, no VMT studies, no bio studies. It's just exempt. We have previously, like side note, seen, seen, it's been slow to, to, SB 35 has not been used that much in a number of jurisdictions, in part because of the prevailing wage requirement. I hear from developers that that's going to change for two reasons. One, this new 10% requirement is pretty enticing, right? You get it with just providing 10% very low income units. And two, because SEQA challenges have become so costly and have drawn projects out so long, it's going to pay to pay prevailing wage to avoid the costs and the risks of SEQA. So we may start seeing more. AB 2011, the next two laws that I'm going to talk about were law, laws that became, that were signed in 2023 and became effective in 2024, and we're just starting to see them used. AB 2011 creates a ministerial approval process for two types of projects, 100% affordable housing projects that are in commercial zones. We have commercial zones in San Rafael and mixed income projects along commercial corridors. There's also 32 pages of like exceptions and qualifying criteria, but that's the general idea. The idea was to allow higher density residential development in commercial zones, even where like the general plan and zoning code don't allow residential development. So specifically in commercial corridors. And because it requires ministerial review and approval, of course, it's not subject to SEQA, which means you could be seeing a very high dense project with a lot of occupants that doesn't undergo a VMT analysis. SB 6, sort of similar intent as AB 2011. It cat, it categorized certain, again, 32 paragraphs of qualifying criteria, certain affordable housing projects as allowable uses, meaning does not require a rezoning or general plan amendment in zones where office, retail, or parking are principally permitted uses. I'll tell you, I have not seen one SB 6 project yet. Certain multifamily mixed use housing projects, I just said that, no longer require rezoning. We do have one AB 20, I'm breaking my own rule, rule here. Don't ask me about this, but we do have one AB 2011 application in San Rafael. But we do have one AB twenty-eleven application in um San Rafael. Before I go on to the single-family zoning laws, which is just a couple of slides and won't take too long. I want to add a general note, which is of all the laws we've just been discussing. There's no prohibition on stacking those laws. So what we see with all of these projects is they're invoking all the benefits of the Housing Accountability Act and Housing Crisis Act, right? Their fall, their filing preliminary applications, they're locking in standards. They're taking their density bonuses, and even if they don't want a more dense project. They're taking incentives or concessions to which they're entitled because they're at least providing a ten percent low income requirement in San Rafael. They're taking waivers. And then on top of it, they can also use SB thirty-five or AB twenty-eleven to get around CEQA. So there's nothing that prohibits developers from stacking all these laws together and um receiving the benefits of all of them. The this, what I just said does not apply in the single-family zoning context. There are certain limitations on stacking um and combining um changes to single-family dwelling zoning. These laws you guys are probably pretty familiar with because they've been before you in some capacity or another. Either in ordinance changes or on appeals or um they've been before the planning commission on a number of projects. Um, and these are the changes to the state ADU laws. SB nine, which is the lot split to single-family dwelling law. And then SB six eighty-four, which is known as the ten parcel law. Um, and I'll just go through those really quickly. So as you guys probably know, the state ADU laws massively changed over the last five years. They require ministerial processing for ADUs. There's limited state standards in the state ADU laws. And those standards um override most local standards. Namely, um, standards on size and setbacks and height of accessory dwelling units. Though accessory dwelling units that comply with state standards and any local San Rafael standards that are like reserved to cities. I either not in those buckets of standards that I just described, cities have to process them ministerially. SB nine became effective two years ago. It kind of built on the ADU laws to say. The legislature, I think, got excited about the ADU laws and its like success. And they said, well, why don't we, you know, like, let's not stop at um accessory dwelling units. Let's also have a second primary dwelling unit. Which can be sold and conveyed separately on a single lot um subject to the same ministerial requirements. What SB nine does is it requires the ministerial processing of both a lot split. So every single family lot in every city in California, again, subject to certain um size standards. Can be split into two lots. And every single family dwelling lot is also now entitled to two primary dwelling units. Also subject to certain size limitations. I have to look up the sizes because I always forget, but. What that means is every single family lot can now turn into four primary dwelling units. If the lot is a size that allows for um a lot split plus two primary dwelling units. And then on top of that, they get their ADUs. They don't, the city, cities do not have to allow um detached and attached ADUs. If you've done a lot split and a two-unit development on each of those lots. But you do have to allow internal conversion ADUs and JDUs. So in theory, you could have four structures and six units on a single-family dwelling lot. And get it all approved ministerially if you sequence it correctly. SB six eighty-four, which was amended last year by SB eleven twenty-three. Is another um law aimed at increasing the number of um primary dwelling units in single-family zones. It creates a streamlined ministerial process for, again, certain qualifying projects. Um, in multifamily zoning districts and is added by eleven twenty-three. And on vacant single-family lots to allow ten new lots of single-family homes. There are obvious size constraints, I again, I have to look it up. But I think the lots can be no no smaller than twelve hundred square feet. Um, and the site can be no greater than five acres. So again, the idea is to take like more infill zones and create a bunch of um housing units in single-family zones. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Neera. That was impressive and overwhelming and lots of information. And as it's a study session, there are no decisions being made, but it is the opportunity for the council to ask questions from anything that they just heard. And so I'll start with Vice Mayor. Wait, hold on, you have to be there or have that one, okay.
My question starts out at Neera but ends up at Director Hinkle, so just so. As I hear your presentation, it sounds like um density can double on a multifamily. Um, the setbacks around all the edges are gone to lot line to lot line, double the density, lot line to lot line, parking restrictions.
Those can be waived out of as well.
Those can be waived out, so it's very close to limitless. Other than the physical reality of that. Given that state of the development law, I now turn to Director Hinkle. Why aren't there a parade of construction train uh cranes going down Forest Street?
Well, give me the easy question, right? I think a lot of it has to do about even the understanding of the different uh laws. You have to remember this is, um, you know, they were adopted really for the lack of housing development through the state of California. So really, it's is getting understanding of really how the laws work and how they apply. But they also have to make financial sense for the developers to move them forward. And I think that's where we're seeing a lot of these type of inquiries coming in. It's not there hasn't been a lack of entitled projects in our community, there have been. But there's been a lack of actually financed and built projects. And I think that's where we're kind of at right now. And um that's why when we kind of look at this this question mark of like, how do we start to push projects forward? Or for me, it's focused the ones that have already been entitled, that just need the um financing and actual physical construction. So a lot of our efforts have been trying to get those projects pushed forward.
So notwithstanding all of these laws, the law of supply and demand, and I guess of the financial world is is is. Stymying our goals of building more housing.
Uh, yes, I I believe that's the case, is the free market element of what gets financed and why and who is able to pay for it, I think is still a factor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bush, I want to add one other thing that I've heard recently. In in a lot of these infill sites, like if you're building downtown, for example, and you want to build a big project, like a high-rise, which is typically over six stories. You have to have like a robust staging location, otherwise the construction can be cost prohibitive. Um, and we don't have a ton of those locations in like dense infill environments like our downtown or in, you know, certain other cities. So that has, that I understand has been an impediment. And then number two. I also understand that with the cost of steel being so skyrocketing, since these laws have sort of been expanding. That also prohibits high-rise, so so high-rises have to be built on a steel frame. They can typically build um six stories or left less with concrete and timber. Three stories of concrete and then three stories of timber, and I I think maybe they can go up to seven with that, but I'm not totally sure. But so a lot of the projects are constrained by just not wanting to use steel.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Hill, questions?
Yes, I'll limit my questions, I had eight questions, but for the sake of time, I'll start with six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just, I'm going to jump around a little bit, guess around a time. Is there a well-known threat in with respect to SB four twenty-three? Is there a well-known threshold for the very low uh unit count that we made? Or is it, it seems like it's arbitrary because I can't recall hearing, oh, you have to get to this number? Or is it proportional to the linear projection, what we needed to have made for our arena cycle?
We do have to hit the issuance of building, a certain number of building permits issued mid-cycle. I don't know what those numbers are in San Rafael. But it is an actual like numerical threshold for your APR, for your annual progress report that like shows your mid-cycle progress. It's like an actual number, like X number of market rate units, X number of low income, X number of moderate.
And this is, I know this is getting into the details, but is it like high school math?
Oh, like, is it like halfway, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. But we can, I'm curious to answer that, so we can find that out.
Yeah, and I think it's, the reason why I think it's important is that we, when we're examining projects and trying to attract. Obviously, we're trying to attract as much as we can, but also there is a point where we don't necessarily want to fall behind and end up in the second tier of SB thirty-five, SB four twenty-three.
Councilmember Hill, there are, I want to say, two hundred and eighty cities in California out of five forty. In the fifty percent category, so like, it's good that, you know, we, we're, I'm sorry, I'm reversing that. In the ten percent category that we are not a part of, so we are. Why I'm reversing my head, we're not in the fifty percent category, so it's, you know, we're doing well that we are not included in that category. Most cities are, and most cities in the Bay Area are not meeting their lower income requirements, and San Rafael is.
Thank you. My next question is, um, you mentioned that there are very few restrictions at this point that we could. Or remedies or ways that we could say, hey, this is, if they meet certain um thresholds. Uh, we can't impose um our objective standards, height, um, et cetera. But you did mention that there are, I'll call them, physical constraints around, say, sewer capacity or electrical capacity. Can you go one level deeper? I know this is more on the the theoretical or counterfactual, because we're not talking about any specific project. But can you imagine a scenario where 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 a builder might encounter a real constraint in the built infrastructure? What is the the remedy then? Is it that the builder would then, we would present the builder theoretically with, say, hey, there's a constraint. You would have to pay for the expansion, or how does that work?
Yeah, and I'll let um Director Hinkle add on if I miss anything. But we always condition projects in a way that requires that they um meet special district standards. And they have to get special district sign-off, they have to get fire sign-off, they have to get sewer sign-off, they have to get water, electrical sign-off before we issue building permits. So while they may pass zoning clearance and get their project entitled for discretionary purposes. Or ministerial purposes by the city, they still have to get building permits to actually put a shovel in the ground. And they don't get to get building permits until they get an MMWD permit or a sewer district permit or PG&E um tie uh connections. And those jurisdictions will not issue their sign-off or the city's building permit. Until they show that their capacity has been increased to accommodate the X number of units. And the projected number of of occupants that are in that building. And so in the case of like MMWD, what we will see them do, or what we saw, for example. Los Galinas do with North Gate was they said with the potential capacity for fourteen hundred additional units. You have to upsize your cup, your your lateral to the main line by this many inches. We didn't have that exact number of inches like prior, it may change once they're in the ground. And so um with that project, it was conditioned to say, you got to meet capacity requirements as imposed by Los Galinas. Which we expect to be an increase in the lateral um pipe of this many inches. But ultimately, once they come in for a building permit, it may be bigger than that. Or I suppose it could be smaller also.
Thank you. I'll uh yield after one more question, which is. Can you, this is a more of a helping us, the laypeople who are not attorneys, understand what? How does legal precedent work? I mean, there's a lot, there's a raft of new laws, and a lot of them have not been fully tested. And you're talking about certain laws, how how does that work? Does it require someone to appeal and it be an appellate court have to rule on it? How, describe that for the layperson?
I'm actually really glad you're asking this because I told myself to remember to tell you guys this, and then I forgot to do it. So yes, so there's all these laws that are, don't tell our local legislators, like, are pretty terribly written. And then everyone's like trying to figure out how to interpret them. And then we interpret them by either approving projects and opponents of the projects through the city. Or denying projects and developers and um housing advocacy groups through the city. And that's, and in those lawsuits, we get um interpretation from the courts on how these laws should be read. And how they're meant to be interpreted. The thing that I wanted to mention that I'm glad you're reminding me is. Under the Housing Accountability Act and a number of these other state laws that are not in the HAA. The Attorney General can intervene and sue cities for a failure to properly implement state housing laws. And we have seen the AG intervene in very surprising cases recently. I was just telling Micah yesterday that we saw the AG intervene in a lawsuit somewhere down in Southern California at the trial court stage. So not even in an appellate court where we actually get citable law. On a tribal um consultation issue. So the AG is intervening on all sorts of laws now. And that is further assisting how the laws are to be interpreted.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
Thank you, uh, just a couple of questions. You had mentioned about the inclusionary rate, and you said if we, if the inclusionary rate is increased, the additional benefits also increase. And with those benefits, are those customizable by the jurisdiction or are they dictated by the state?
Yeah, they're they're set by the state, so the amount of density bonus you get. Based on the number of, or the percentage of affordable units you provide as a developer, those are set by the state. There's like a big matrix of you provide this percentage of this um income limit, and you get this much density bonus. And then the number of incentives and concessions you get um is also based on how many, um, what percentage of units you provide. I will say that, like, even if the city increased, you know, even if the city stayed at a ten percent low income inclusionary. They can all, a developer can always come in and say, I'm making more than ten percent of my units low income. To get a higher density bonus and get more incentives or concessions. So the city can't like put a ceiling on what percentage of affordable units a developer wants to provide.
Thank you. The one measure that I was been tracking and following a bit is SB seventy-nine, which is the development around transit. The half a mile round transit, and I was wondering if we've started to see any of those coming through or how those come into play.
Yeah, I don't think we've seen any of those, have we?
Um, we've definitely seen uh applications filed within a half mile, especially for downtown and North Gate. And they are looking at a lot of those provisions in terms of parking reductions and um half-mile transit capacity. But it's really been over SB three thirties, they, that's really the best thing standpoint they've been after, so. Haven't seen anything kind of dive deeper, and I think that's what we're getting at, there's a bevy of housing laws. So it really depends on what menu items you want to pick as a developer. And we're, that's why it's so interesting for me is is the formal application phase. So what exactly are you asking us to do so we can analyze it accordingly? That's why do we get support from our city attorney's office in doing this to say, well, how do these apply and why? And and they are growing in complexity, and that's really been a changed position for the city of of all the new. Different housing law options that exist for the development community. So the formal application is such a critical phase for us to actually understand exactly what they're asking and also if they qualify or not.
And I think in this this current legislative session, we are going to see more coming through.
The the other thing we're seeing, I'm just mentioning this because again, this is like my pet interest that I read about at night. We're seeing a bunch of new laws that are clawing back cities' ability to impose impact fees and collect impact fees. And those requirements are getting a lot stricter. So while the legislature is like telling cities, you have to allow developers to build how they want, where they want, what they want. And also you can't collect fees in the same way you have been to offset the impacts of those developments. Like, I think that's going to be the next trend we see.
I was curious about your comment about the. Um, I was curious about your comment about the staging areas. Is that built, which, which one is that built into?
That was just my, um, off-the-cuff comment. No, no laws on that.
No laws on that, okay. Because I was actually curious, like, does that apply to urban and rural? You know, how does that apply?
Yeah, no, I think, I was just saying that in response to, like, there are physical limitations in the world to, like, sky's the limit. And even when we're seeing some sky's the limit projects, like, do you guys remember that, um, Sunset project that everyone said was a builder's only project? It wasn't. It was just a density bonus project where they were stacking density bonus and they were waving out of height. And that project, like, the inside scoop on that project was, it's never going to be built. There's no way to build a tower that high in that neighborhood where there's no ability to get, you know, steel framing in, as opposed to when we saw Salesforce Tower go up south of Market where there was a ton of vacant land, and they were using the bus terminal for staging. Like, it was just a place where a, a high-rise could actually be built as opposed to in a single-family neighborhood where all the lots are that big and are occupied by homes.
Okay, but there's nothing official around that. All right, thank you.
Don't repeat anything that I just said about that. That's just my speculation.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, I know that with, with the state, we are looking at a, like, a state of emergency around wildfires. There's also sea level rise and, like, in the canal, it's sinking. So, um, do you see any, because they are also eliminating through that CEQA and just to make sure that everything is going to be permitted really quickly. So how do you see that, like, for instance, like, in the canal or, like, in areas that they are sinking?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So a bunch of the laws I talked about, and again, not wanting to go into the thirty-two paragraphs of exceptions, a bunch of the laws I talked about do have those exact exceptions that you just said. So can't be in a FEMA flood hazard zone, can't be in a very high fire hazard severity zone. So there are some areas of San Rafael that are in very high fire hazard severity zones. You can't invoke SB thirty-five, AB twenty-eleven, SB six there. Likewise, you can't invoke those, um, in areas that are in, uh, FEMA flood plains. The HAA, like, the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing Crisis Act, what, you know, which say you can only apply objective standards and the state density bonus law, those don't have those limits. But what those laws have is the city can make findings, um, health and safety findings, which if you recall, I said they're, they're really hard to make. But if the city can make those health and safety findings, then it does not have to approve a project at that density and at that capacity.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, and, and right now, you mentioned, uh, like, in, you know, city, we provide, like, basically ten percent um, for low income, for, for, uh, new developments. And if we were to change, because we lowered the percentage from a higher percentage we had before, if we were hypothetically increase it to twenty percent, it doesn't really matter, because at the end, it's going to be the state.
Well, so that's another good question. So HCD actually has a presumption that a fifteen percent low-income inclusionary requirement does not have the effect of precluding housing, precluding the production of housing. If you go above, if you stay at fifteen percent low income or below, meaning you have fifteen percent moderate, or fifteen percent low, or ten percent low, or ten percent moderate, there is a presumption that that requirement does not impede the production of housing, which as an aside, is like totally ridiculous, because of course it does, because it costs the developers a lot. But that's what HCD says, because they also want to produce, you know, they also want to incentivize the production of affordable housing. If you go above that and you adopt an inclusionary requirement that is either deeper in affordability, so like a fifteen percent very low or extremely low inclusionary requirement, or you go up to twenty percent low, then you have to submit that to HCD, who has to, like, okay it and make sure you've made the appropriate findings, that you're not impeding the production of housing.
Okay. And, um, this is for new development housing?
That's right.
But if they were to take, like, an old building, in order for this to apply, they would have to tear it down for it to apply? Or?
Yeah.
Remodel percentage, or how would that work?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a, um, that is kind of a city-by-city determination. So the rules on replacement housing, which say, you know, you have to produce as many units and you have to keep protected units protected, I think, is that what you're partly asking about with the demolition? Yeah. Those rules only apply to housing development projects, and they don't require, apply to demolition. So arguably, you can demolish your house as long, or your apartment building without triggering those replacement requirements, if the city allows you to do so, um, without having another project on the books. The affordability requirements are triggered for new development. And new development is defined on a city-by-city basis, depending on how much you, uh, renovate or how much of your struck, you know how, like, you drive around, sometimes you see, like, one random wall standing? And I always think to myself, like, oh, that city has a kind of weird, like, redevelopment definition in their muni code. They're trying, those developers are trying to get around having a new development. So, and I don't know, I'd have to turn to Director Hinkle to describe.
I'm going to interrupt, so if you have a more question, I'm just watching the time, because we actually have a closed session at five-thirty, and I want to have time for the public. So do you have any other questions that are burning?
No, I'll.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, I, I have a couple, but I'm just going to ask one, and that's really around the revision of the objective standards. If the city were to go through that act of doing that, would they apply right away? Or do you, uh, if they've already done a pre-application, and those are the ones that are locked in? So it wouldn't be until later ones? Or is there some sort of, like, grace period that developers would still be able to adhere to the current standards, even once they've been changed?
Yeah, any standards adopted after a developer has filed a preliminary application do not apply. But if we, if the city were to amend and adopt new objective standards, they could become effective immediately, or if they modify.
Okay.
Or they, if they modify the code, it would have to be two readings in thirty days. Um, and they would apply to all development projects that don't file preliminary applications and development projects that file preliminary applications after the effective date.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was also, um, frozen in place. Okay. So, uh, we have a little, a few more minutes for, um, public comment. If you'd like to comment on this item, you are invited but not required to say your name. And you have two minutes and come down to the podium where there's not a microphone, but I know the city, city clerk will make sure that there's one there. So if anyone wants to comment. As I said, this is a study session providing lots of information. And if you have additional questions, feel free to email. Madam City, um, manager, who would you want folks to email after they've watched this presentation or have questions?
For questions?
Mm-hmm.
I would say Micah.
Sure.
So, community dot development at cityofSanRafel.org? At the right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, just, okay, just so a place that people can go to have their questions answered. So if anyone in the room would like to comment, now is your time. Okay, not seeing anyone. I'm going to close the public comment and appreciate Nira for all that information. I think we're going to want to go back and watch it, watch the tape, because there was a lot of, um, uh, a lot of information provided us, but the takeaway is the landscape has changed. So for long-timers that have been in San Rafael for decades and had an assumption about the way that buildings or development was done here, it's actually a new day. So the more that we can get that information out. And one thing we would love to get from other cities with whom you're working, I know Director Hinkle's working on this, is around the messaging on that, because there is so much information, what you just gave, and how can we share that to the community in a way that's digestible, and they can start to understand? So, um, thank you. We, uh, let me see if that, Madam City Clerk, I can adjourn this meeting? Okay, we will adjourn this meeting until the regular one at six PM. Meeting's adjourned.
We apologize that we're a few minutes later than our six o'clock start. Today is Monday, March 17th. This is a regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. So happy St. Patrick's Day. We appreciate you being here with us this evening, whether you're here in person or watching online. As always, we like to appreciate the city staff at the beginning of the meeting. And I have some very specific thanking this evening as part of the city's ongoing commitment to recognize employees. City employees are able to nominate their colleagues for both team and individual of the quarter. And last week, I had the honor of partaking in these recognitions as they were recognizing Q4 of 2024. The team of the quarter for 2024 is the Public Works Shop and Equipment Maintenance Team. Gerardo Paredes, James Arieta, and Angel Lopez. We acknowledge their work because those, that high-functioning team, that's the team that keeps the city vehicles and the working, the equipment and working order, which if you think about it, is the backbone of much of the work that the Department of Public Works does every day. So congratulations to the Public Workshop and Equipment Maintenance Team. In addition, we had the employee of Q4 that was recognized last week, and that is Kate Tagaman. She is our Climate Adaptation and Resilience Planner. Kate is leading groundbreaking sea level rise work, and she has raised the bar for sea level rise planning in the region. She integrates social equity and inclusivity in all of her efforts, and we are so fortunate to have her here in the city. Congratulations to all of those individuals for the incredible work they do every single day. I also would like to highlight some recent infrastructure grants that cities, the city staff successfully competed for and won. This is fantastic news, and it's nice to start off our meetings with such good news. As you all know, infrastructure projects are very expensive, and they require outside funding to move forward. So recently, San Rafael has secured over $13 million, 13.65 million to fund three separate projects. One project is along the Lincoln Avenue between Second and Paloma. The second is a new bicycle and pedestrian path in downtown San Rafael, which is part of that north-south greenway that goes throughout Marin County. And the third project is to create a fully separated shared-use path along the Bellum Boulevard corridor, which will connect the canal to downtown San Rafael and Larkspur. So congratulations to all the city staff. This doesn't happen by magic. It takes a lot of efforts to put together compelling and competitive grant proposals, which staff did, and our community will greatly benefit from these connections for years to come. So yeah, this is us clapping from the dais. And before we turn to the business portion, we include a land acknowledgement in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Cozumelwak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you. We're glad that you're here, and thank you for indulging me a little bit. Actually, it's not indulging. People should know the great things that our city employees are doing. I will now turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you have any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanfavel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for the city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I wanted to start off by providing some context to a, the equity-related resolution that's on the consent calendar this evening. By passing this resolution, we're messaging to the community that the city is committed to ensuring that all of our residents feel safe and empowered to participate fully in civic life. We all know that we are experiencing a moment in time where our community is facing heightened fear and uncertainty, whether due to social, political, or economic pressures. Our community's richness comes from its diverse perspectives, and trust is built when all voices are heard. This resolution reinforces San Rafael's commitment to transparent and responsive government, and in times of uncertainty and division, we remain steadfast in ensuring the rights and inclusion of all residents. This re, this resolution reinforces the city's commitment to equity, inclusion, justice, and democracy. It also reaffirms those values and demonstrates our unwavering dedication to being a welcoming and inclusive city. I also wanted to remind the community as well that, I spoke on this earlier in January, but as a matter of both policy and practice, the San Rafael Police Department does not engage in immigration enforcement activities. And under the current federal law, this means that the police department does not collaborate with federal immigration officials in investigations, interrogations, detentions, or arrests related to immigration status. They do not conduct immigration enforcement actions, and they do not share information regarding immigration status with federal agencies unless required by law. So I also wanted to share some resources. Our nonprofit partners are, we're convening a meeting with them, as well as our school district partners, to discuss how we will, together collectively, support the community in this time of uncertainty. And our local nonprofits are, are offering various services to support, in particular, the immigrant community right now. So Canal Alliance is providing Know Your Rights workshops and affordable immigration legal services. They are hosting a talk on immigration in Spanish via Zoom on Wednesday, March 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30, and you can get the Zoom information on Canal Alliance's website. There are, being handed out, I think the schools and then the nonprofits have immigration Know Your Rights red cards. I wanted to mention that those contain information about residents' constitutional rights to help them communicate when and if they're interacting with a federal immigration agent. So it's a double-sided card, Spanish and English. John has got one in his hand as a, as a prop. So you can pick these red cards up at Canal Alliance and Multicultural Center of Marin, and there's also a website. It's Immigration Legal Resources Center's website. You can print them out, which is www-ilrc.org. Next, I wanted to mention that the county's Office of Emergency Operations is updating the Alert Marin system. And so it's, it's an updated system. There, this, I guess the crossover, the launch of it is on March 31st. It's a new platform that features faster signups, multi-language support, and enhanced reliability. So if you're already enrolled in Alert Marin, you, you'll be automatically transferred to the new system. If you haven't yet signed up, this is a plug to do so, and visit alertmarin.org. I also had on my comments to appreciate Public Works, and I, in particular, want to call out Director Miller for her leadership in, and strategic thinking and going for these grants. It's, it's incredibly impressive. They're very, very competitive, and we're really lucky to have a team that is so successful. Also, just want to mention this week that the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee is meeting in this room on Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:30.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out. Vice Mayor Bushy.
I got to do three fun things. First, my favorite meeting of the year, the Public Service Award meeting. It always is very close to my heart because I served with Dick O'Brien, who it's, it's named after on the, on the Planning Commission. So our lips are sealed, but we made our, and we made our choice. That was fun. And the Central Insanitation Agency Board meeting was, was routine, although our, our general manager informed us that the Food to Energy Program that, that was the best energy program, or best engineering program award for our region came in second overall in the state. So super good, super good news there. And finally, I was delighted to join the mayor at the ribbon cutting for the Burn House last week, kicking off the St. Patrick's season. So there you go. Happy report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kurtz.
I just have one item to report, which is the e-bike Subcommittee or Committee that I'm on with the county. Their proposed resolution is going to be going to the Supervisors for Review on the 25th of March, and following that conversation, the jurisdictions will be taking a look at what might be possible in each of the areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I have one meeting to report, and that is the same meeting that Vice Mayor Bushy attended, which is the PSA Selection Committee. So my lips are sealed, and I will use this moment in my privilege to really underscore just how exceptional it is that we were able to secure so much in our infrastructure that is non-trivial. It's the opposite, it is extraordinary. So again, I will underscore hats off to Public Works, specifically Director Miller for foresight and making certain that our applications are as competitive and well-crafted as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Yes, I'll start by saying congratulations as well. And this, on, at the beginning of March, I volunteer with Vivalon Meals on Wheels to deliver meals to two seniors in San Rafael, and that was during the Vivalon's March for Meals campaign, raising awareness about critical funding to make sure that our older adults, that they cannot leave their houses. You know, they have enough meals, and also companionship. I had a very good conversation, so it was a lovely program. Also, made with some residents around parking permits. And also, the Sea Level Rights Committee meeting happened in March to plan for the Steering Committee meeting that is going to happen on March 26th. And my highlight, actually, I attended the Civic Well Policymakers Conference last weekend, and we had like over 100 different elected officials from the state of California looking around housing affordability, water sustainability, and sea level rise, wildfire resilience, and infrastructure planning, conversations about the Prop 4 around the climate bond that, that you gotta actually approve by the voters. And their theme is transforming local vision into action. So I'm really excited about the relationships that I have formed in there, so we can maybe do more, you know, from our city. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just had two additional meetings, in addition to the Burn House, which, by the way, had Irish dancers. I haven't been to a ribbon cutting that had Irish dancers. It was amazing.
And a bagpipe.
And what?
And a bagpipe.
And a bagpipe, right. So that was, I think they posted on Instagram. So in addition, I was honored to speak at Drake Terrace. I got some good questions from the residents that were there, as well as the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association, and I want to give a shout out to Kate Anderson, part of San Rafael Fire Department, who showed up in the evening and talked to residents. who showed up in the evening and talked to residents about what they could do for wildfire preparation. So people want to, people want to know what they can do. So thank you, Kate, for that. Those are our reports from the city manager and the council members. If you'd like to comment, if any members of the public would like to comment on those reports specifically, now is your opportunity. I'll open the public comment. And you are invited, but not required, to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
I just a quick question that Know Your Rights meeting in Spanish, is that something where it gets translated to English? If someone needs that? Just a question.
Thank you.
That's a great question. I'll look it up and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the city council member or city manager report?
John Reynolds, I still live in the canal, a condo in the canal. So it's really difficult there with families bunching up in different apartments and renting. And we need to, the Bosu State Canal and Skoladi and others working and providing affordable housing in the canal, that's a concern. I could come back from Maui. I was with my sister who has Alzheimer's. I'm filling in for that from time to time. But I'm back here, and I'm really concerned. I'm glad that you've been active with the Welcome Center and Canal Community Alliance in supporting immigrants that are law-abiding and working and have families here. That's very helpful, and I see that happening. And we're part of the accompaniment network from Marin Interfaith Council that's getting people housed and supporting them with the red cards and with rapid response and that kind of thing. Maybe not a lot of that has happened here yet. But then I look forward to the Truth Act Forum at the Board of Supervisors coming up, I think, March 25th at 5:00. So have people going to that. We need to really protect the people at work that are immigrants here that have not committed crimes, even though they don't have documents. We really need to move on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the reports? Not seeing any. I'm going to close the public comment and move on to the next agenda item. But before we go to the consent calendar, we did have a closed session prior. We had a study session this afternoon, then we had a closed session. And I skipped over having our Assistant City Attorney report out if there's any action, reportable action from that closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda? I'm looking to my right, seeing shaking heads. I will pull, I will hold 4D to make, which is Marin Transit Collaboration Agreement. I will make, I want to make some comments on that. But I will accept public comments on the entire consent agenda. So that's 4A all the way through 4HI. So if you'd like to comment on the consent agenda, now is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to close the public comment. I had asked to pull 4D. It's the Marin Transit Collaboration Agreement. I want to extend a heartfelt appreciation to the Marin Transit Board, the Marin Transit General Manager Nancy Whelan, for a willingness to go into, sign a formal agreement with the city of San Rafael around their tent, their project, proposed project at 1075 East Francisco Boulevard. Marin Transit acquired that property, and it is not in alignment with the, with the city's current general plan, adopted general plan. So it was important to the city to have those avenues and those venues for conversation where the community can continue to engage and have a project that not only is a bus parking lot, but hopefully delivers some specific benefits to the community that's there. So thank you to each of the Marin Transit Board members with whom I spoke personally, except for Transit Member Bushy. I did not speak with her directly, nor did I speak with the alternate Yuren Skoladi. But the other ones were all quite receptive. So just wanted to highlight that before I took the vote on the consent calendar. So with that, if there's a motion, I would accept that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We have a public hearing this evening on the General Plan 2040 Progress Report. And I see Director Hinkle has joined us, and so has Margaret Kavanaugh. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kate and council members. Micah Hinkle, Community Economic Development Director. I'm actually going to turn this one over to Planning Manager Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. But really, just on the preface of this, it's just an overview, really, of our annual report, our general plan policies, and our housing progress report. So with that, Margaret, please take away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I'm going to do a high-level review of our annual progress report for the year 2024. As you know, government code mandates that local jurisdictions prepare an annual progress report on the status of the city's general plan and progress towards meeting its share of the regional housing need allocation or RENA. A copy of that same report must be sent to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st, and reporting on the calendar year last. About to go through a very high overview of the number of spreadsheets that you had in your packet. I, every year, I want to thank the city manager's office and the city clerk's office staff for trying to help me format unformatible Excel spreadsheets. So I apologize for the craziness. What I want to do this evening is just give you the overview of the numbers that we've accomplished this year. Table A. All the actual tables are included in the back of the report. But the highlight reel is we had 440 dwellings submitted in calendar year 2024, and 227 of them were entitled. So entitled is planning, permitted is building. So that's the English-to-planning language translation. The balance between 440 and 227 is the 213 dwelling units, which is the project at 930 Irwin. That will be coming before the Planning Commission in the next month or two. We are working on the secret documents. So that's a very nice showing of major projects that we saw come in in calendar year 24. Table A2, Annual Building Activity Report Summary. So this is where the new construction, entitled, which is that planning permits, which is the building permits issued, and then completed. That would be a certificate of occupancy or final inspection. I do want to call out, I was so exuberant about Northgate. I listed it as 1,622 dwelling units. I apologize. It is 1,422 dwelling units. I really do apologize about that. What this is showing you, though, is Northgate. Northgate, which the council worked so hard on last year, shows up as a huge win in the entitled column for calendar year 24. In addition, we had a fourplex that finished its map, was entitled with its final map, or its tentative map, at 709 C Street, and that's the four there. And the other is there are 34 accessory dwelling units that were entitled and permitted. We actually review them at the building permit stage. Planning doesn't make it a two-step process. We look at it once to try to expedite them. And of the 34 that were entitled and permitted in calendar year 24, three of them have been completed. So it's a process. It's always a little bit harder than it appears in the advertisements or the social media, but they are moving along. I also wanted to note that of the 38 permitted accessory, the 34 permitted accessory dwelling units, 12 of those are considered low-income and non-dedicated because they are less than 500 square feet. And that's following the rules of the state of California. So whenever you see a garage conversion, not only is it an accessory dwelling unit, it's actually, by its size, considered a low-income unit. And as I, as you learned at the 430 staff council meeting, it matters to have different levels of affordability showing up in our RENA numbers. So we're excited to see any version of any option of housing being entitled and permitted in our city. Table B is the really large table in the attachments. It's the regional, it is the RENA permitted units issued by affordability. As you can see, we are moving along. I'm very optimistic that a number of the items that you saw entitled in calendar year 24 will be permitted by calendar year 25. But this is how the pipeline works. So our numbers are as presented here. And again, if they don't have a building permit issued that year, they don't show up under the RENA numbers. So the number of things that are coming along for this calendar year that we are optimistic will be showing up in our next annual report. Not quite sure what happened to this, but I will just give a highlight. Table D is the Program Implementation Status, part of what we need to be reporting on per government code. Basically, there are over 40 programs identified in the housing element to streamline housing development within the city, provide housing protections to vulnerable communities, reduce homelessness, combat discrimination, and increase housing choices. Those are all included on your, in your packet, but I wanted to highlight a few of them. And again, I apologize for the formatting error. Number, first one I wanted to highlight was the Community Service Division was established in the city manager's office, as you know. It is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for all residents with a special focus of disadvantaged, historically underserved, and vulnerable populations. The city was awarded a total of $1 million of state and local funds to facilitate the development of a sanctioned camping area along a portion of the Mahan Creek Path, currently serving 65 participants and doing case management, outreach, and other services to help secure permanent housing. They also were able to, in partnership with the county of Marin, secure $5,999,241 encampment resolution funding. Again, of the work that your staff does on a daily basis to find funds to support, in this case, the interim shelter along the Mahan Creek encampment area. Let's see. In addition, at 3301 Kerner Boulevard, we are under construction with 40 units of permanent supportive housing. Another project, they received both city and county funding. Code Enforcement inspected 1,364 rental units at 54 properties. I will say, just I've been here about a year and a half, and I sit very close to the Code Enforcement staff. They are so hardworking and so diligent, and they are so empathetic. As they do their inspections, it's really an honor to be working beside those folks. But that's part of our Housing Element Program 12. And finally, just one more to touch on, Rooted in Marin, which is a really exciting program. The Housing Division staff participated in a community-centered engagement and education process to understand displacement in Marin. The project team heard from communities across the county regarding their experiences and housing concerns through a countywide survey, a community workshop, and focus groups. They also researched and analyzed anti-displacement policies identified during community engagement process and compiled a draft report outlining the community engagement process, feedback they've received, and information on relevant policies, including feasibility analysis and case studies from other jurisdictions. The San Rafael staff planned to use this information that was gathered through this process, along with city-specific data and feedback gathered through tenant housing workshops. The draft report is actually out right now, and the final report will be out just in a few more months. So that's moving along. But another sign of leveraging the money that we do have to look at what's uniquely challenging in Marin County and then diving deeper into the data to look at what is specific to San Rafael and how we can address it for our city. Finally, the last section of the staff reports contains progress reports, some updates from general plan policies from the Public Works Department, the Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Fire Department. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2024 and direct staff to present this to California Department of Housing and Community Development with the edit, as I noted in today's staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Planning Manager Kavanaugh Lynch. Appreciate your presentation. I'll first turn to my colleagues for questions that they may have. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes, I'm going to ask you a high-level question. Give us the summary. This is your annual report, and I guess it's your first one on the, on the general plan. What are the big surprises? What's going well, what's not going well? The numbers don't look very impressive, to be honest. You know, we're in the single digits of percentages of achievement. So what, are there any new proposals going forward? What, what are your strategic-level thoughts?
I'm, thank you, council member. I'm happy to start that response, and then I will be looking over to Director Hinkle to give you a better, broader overview. There is a very big pipeline of projects that are encircling the city of San Rafael right now. I think how we get to that table, the RENA number table, which is the one that we're all holding on to, right, is we need the building permits to be issued. And in order for the building permits to be issued, the development teams have to get their construction financing. So we can provide surety of process. We can be clear in our communications with development teams. And I just want to reflect that the number of entitled units you have is, I think, beyond anything the city of San Rafael has seen. And honestly, in my career, that's a lot of dwelling units that were entitled last year. Like that's, that maybe, I think that is by far. I know a specific plan in a city I used to work in, and that would have been the total number of things we could have entitled under the secret document. So that's a huge, huge lift, and the council had a big part of that, working on Northgate. The next step is we need the economy to participate, and funding sources have to be made available. And we need to continue to work as close as we can with our development teams as both a regulator and a collaborator to try to get them through the construction financing process, into building permit, and then out to their certificate of occupancy. Hand it over to Director Hinkle.
Thank you. Just to add on, I think we kind of had this at our work session earlier today about kind of the changing dynamics related to housing development. So I think a lot of these policy adjustments from the state level actually haven't really kind of hit, hit yet, but they are. And it's really reflective of our development pipeline. If you recall, even for Northgate, I mean, that's a process we started really early on. We've had a lot of community engagement input and the process in to kind of get it to the finish line of entitlement, which we did last year, which will show up. But then there is a push, too, about for entitled projects, and I did mention this earlier today, is helping the entitled projects move towards the actual construction, construction permitting, and actually physical building the building. And we're seeing that. I mean, you know, there's a site off of Lincoln, right? We've, you know, I worked on that project 25 years ago. So to see that actually raised out of the ground, I'm like, yes. That's, that's part of that process. And I do think that's part of, you know, our challenge now is to kind of support those projects as they move forward for construction. And really, that's in the charge of the department as we start to review this. But the pipeline is significant, and that really is a change for us. So how do we build the internal processing? You know, reestablish the standard operating procedures, make sure we have the right staff and the bench depth to actually support the amount of projects that are coming through our doors. And to the point we kind of discussed earlier today was formal applications. You know, the second that the developers select kind of their menu list of what state programs they're participating in for us to be responsive to that end. And that's really a combination item, that city attorney's office, the community economic development, as we kind of move through our planning commission and potentially council, depending on the entitlement. But there's a lot of pieces to this. But then Margaret's totally right. A lot of this really depends on the economy. You know, we are kind of coming out of, we kind of look at the pipeline behind us. Some of those projects were entitled during the COVID errors or pre. So with the time extensions kind of lining up, so the ability to push those entitled projects to construction really is kind of the charge we have right now, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
Couple of questions. Based on that, is the state indicating at all that with the RENA numbers, that there would be any accommodation recognizing that the economy is challenged based on construction costs and interest rates?
I'm not seeing any indication from that, from HCD. Really, at times, it's, you know, continuing, moving past this. I also think really why we even have this type of RENA report or the HCD numbers is for the state to actually collect the data. It's also an opportunity for them to analyze a lot of the legislation that was passed to see how effective it was. As much as we want to push projects forward, there still is the market reality As much as we want to push projects forward, there still is the market reality because we are relying on private developers actually to build some of these projects to come forward.
And have we even, I think we talked about this a little bit last year. Have we received any additional feedback from the state in terms of if we don't meet our RENA numbers, what happens?
I have not, I've not had those discussions with the state. A lot of times, it is programmatically, when we do submit our numbers and information, typically they say, "Thank you." And that's really the end of that. But we're talking about the different RENA cycles we have, and I think that's adjustment. But if we look at really our numbers in total, there are improvements. We are making those efforts from this council to staff to the development community. We are making progress. And there is a backlog of development interests to this community that just has not been met.
And then I have another question, and we emailed a little bit around this, of the different types of projects or programs that are out there to actually expedite from approval to construction. And have you thought of like what we might want to consider down the road as possible things, other different types of programs we could implement?
Sure. No, I appreciate that question. There's really two focal areas that the city has targeted as part of the permit streamlining or the efficiencies opportunity. One is an economic development program called the San Rafael GO Program. And that really is led by our economic development team, and that is established really as an enhanced customer service program. A lot of it is really, the struggle of sometimes working with the cities, they're like, where do I start? Where do I go? How do I, who do I talk to? Where we establish a programmatic approach to actually help get those questions answered. You know, a lot of times for the pre-development or through the development cycles, like, once a project goes through the planning, gets entitled, sometimes there's stalling issues or like, hey, I need a time extension, or how do I proceed with this? I got a public works question. The approach was to create a program to actually help answer those type of questions so those developers get exactly what they need. But we established actually a programmatic team that helps answer those questions. So there is that kind of continuity of care through the whole process. The other one is really the investment on our software. One of the backbone pieces we have is a 30-year-old software program. So when we talk about efficiencies or opportunity, mobile-enabled, or you know, how we get, you know, people get information, and also for us to run reports and do a little more data analysis within our own permit activity. We have a, you know, council did approve a contract to actually bring in another software platform called OpenGov, and we're currently in the initial phases of the groundwork for building out that program. But it also gives us an opportunity to really address kind of the systematic approach to this, you know, how it ties into our finance system, how do people make payments, how to make this easier from a user standpoint. And I do want to kind of call out our digital services team, who's actually been leading that effort for us, helping us kind of look at the user-centric focus of, for people, how do we actually make this work a little easier versus the current system we have?
That's helpful to hear. I didn't realize that the GO program was also for developers. I really had thought that that was just for small businesses and business owners. Are developers taking advantage of using the GO program?
Very much so. I feel a lot of our developers, especially on early, like, thoughts or inquiries on the city, a lot of times, we actually do push those developers to our GO program to start. So they kind of hold that space so allow our planners to continue to work through the projects they have. But it allows someone to be responsive to those inquiries and also track the issues because they're not sometimes just planning, they're actually maybe county issues, they may be something else beyond that. But at least we can align those resources for getting those answers back to them about what they need to move forward.
Right. Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll all save the rest for comments, but thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Guladi.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. So I know that we are centering, like, in housing, which, you know, influences everything else, but I wanted to highlight a couple of other things in the plan. So I guess the first one is around, I know that in the RENA numbers, they don't include preservation of current housing, but it is in the Plan 2040. So, and I know that we are talking about goals and objectives for the city right now, but how, what is the progress that we are doing around that, around tenant protections, just to make sure that people are not getting displaced, especially around sea level rise and other climate change items that are happening?
So, you know, not reflected in the RENA numbers, but there's a lot of activity that we spend on there, including a lot of engagement, community workshops that our Housing Division has been working towards. One of the requests that council had was a report of our existing anti-displacement policies. So currently, staff actually has been working on providing analysis and details of that that we'll actually bring back to the council homeless and housing committee. We anticipate that probably within the next couple of months, if not sooner, but we're currently working on that. Another part of that, too, is also an inquiry about our inclusionary housing requirements. It's another area that we've been focused on and spending resource to provide policy options for council's consideration.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I guess in the study session we had before, we were talking about, right now, we had a 10% for developers for low-income housing, whether, how is that working? Do we want to increase the percentage or, you know, so that will be at the same time?
Yes. Now, they may not be on the same agenda topic, but we are working towards that end, and they may have different tracking. But that is an item that we will be bringing back to the Housing and Homeless Subcommittee.
Okay, great. My other question is around the three canopies and around climate change mitigation. I know that we have done, like, currently, like, a study, so when will that be coming to council? And what will be like the next steps around greening more our cities, especially our underserved communities?
Sure. Now, I'm going to defer that one to our Public Works Director, April Miller. She's actually been tracking that project on its progress.
Hi, Director Miller, Public Works. So, yeah, we're currently working with our asset management software. We did a scan of all of the trees in the city, and we're just working on looking at our inventory, seeing what we need to update, you know, seeing where we need to get arborist reports and working with the community. There is a San Rafael Tree Group who has offered assistance on helping us with some of our data. So that's kind of the next step, is we're sorting out our data and figuring out how we can get assistance. I am not sure when it's going to come back to City Council. Right now, there's not really an agenda item, like, in our process to come back to council. I mean, someday in the future, when we do our tree ordinance, that has to come back to City Council, and that's on our list of things to do. So I just don't have a projection of when. It will be in the next three-year goals and objective cycle? So I guess we're a rough timeline.
Okay, thank you. I'll add it to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you for the presentation, Margaret. It was a great summary of what the staff report said, which was very informative. Building on Vice Mayor Bushy's observation of a very slow progress, by my very quick math, when we look even at just the very low row of our progress, we're achieving under 25% of what my algebra math would say we need to be doing year over year. And yet, what we heard earlier in our conversation with Niraj Doherty, our outside counsel, who walked us through recent legislation, is that HCD is looking at that and saying, you've met a sufficient amount so that you're not subject to more rigorous, say, disposition for, say, SB 35, where a developer can by right be able to build more aggressively. And so I'm curious, do we, it does seem like there is a curve that they're looking at that some jurisdictions are able to achieve, even if it's a modest amount of unit creation and be able to be not subject to more rigorous penalties. Can you describe that more? I know I asked this of Niraj earlier, and she would get back to me, but I don't know if you have a characterization, even if it's not an exact number, it does seem like they are grading on the curve, if you will. Can you maybe comment on that?
Man, this is the last time I let our housing manager go on vacation. So I almost left it right now. From my perspective, when I look at our RENA numbers and how we're performing, it's also the RENA cycle. Like, there is a window of time, and I think the HCD does recognize within this RENA cycle and number allocations. So I do think we're tracking, from the previous cycle, we're tracking in order. But I do think we're going to have to make progress on actual built projects. And that's something that's been outlined from council, it's been outlined for the city management standpoint, also from city staff, is the focus of getting these entitled projects built. And even for our reduction of some of our inclusionary housing requirements, that was a direct, you know, call-out of what developers were speaking to us, saying that, hey, we're having a hard time making these projects work, can you lower your inclusionary housing requirements? Well, we did that, and we still didn't receive projects from that end. So still kind of pushing that in to say, at what point does this work out? And a lot of it is, in my opinion, is somewhat out of the local control hands. It really is on the development standpoint, also the market and available capital, construction costs, still, you name it, there's multiple factors that really is kind of limiting where San Rafael is at this time. My hope and my observations of this in terms of just economic cycles is the ability to deliver one project, to actually have it actually financed, built and under construction, and perform well, will be kind of the catalyst for the rest of the projects to fall. Real estate development and housing development are very following a pack, right? They're like, hey, that developer made money, we're going to go right behind him using the same model. So the ability for the rents to actually come and that developer to move forward and build a successful project, we're looking for that to play out, and I am anticipating it to happen, at least a project to pull building permits this year, so, of that nature.
Thank you. And then, just as a net, I was noticing that in Table D, program implementation, just Table D, there were four programs that indicated that it was, just make sure, no action. Would it be, because as I clarified via email, that this didn't mean that we're not going to take action, it just means that it's deferred action until that year actually comes to pass. Is there a way that we could just indicate that? My only, I don't know how HCD is going to, or Housing and Community Development is going to read it and say, no action required, or just make sure we're clear to them that we are anticipating action?
That's a great option. That was a great observation, because I read the same thing. I'm like, hey, we're doing so well on so many ends, no action, what happened here? So what they are are future items. So in essence, if you look at the targeted year, some of them are 2025, which we have not completed. So they are targeted tasks. So I do think we can edit those notes to, you know, targeted task, we'll report out in 2026 for that number. Same goes for the other ones that are even further out years. I also, there was an exchange I had earlier, I do think it's also important that we mark progress from year to year. You have to remember, these are multi-year task items, but then sometimes we make good gains, sometimes we have negative gains. So I think it'd be good also to note really about how those are doing on a year-to-year basis. So really, just more context of really what we're seeing, because it really is kind of reflective. Like, if there is no financing market, even though we entitled everything and no one pulls a building permit, we can probably reflect it in some of those notes so there is clarification of really what's happening from our perspective.
Absolutely. And building on that, I think, too, I'll just bring forward an observation that'll turn into a question, which is that I think we're noticing that more and more developers are requesting extensions on their entitlements. And my hope is that, or remember, my question is to make certain that we maintain a robust pipeline, that it would seem that staff would be able to continue to provide extensions in order to keep that pipeline as robust as possible.
Yes, we actually do have authority within the municipal code to do those time extensions, and also I do believe there's some recent state legislation. I think the state's also catching up a little bit, too, about getting automatic time extensions for those projects that need a little additional time. So we're working through both, and there's a, we have multiple tools to actually answer that. And the one thing I do, we need to be kind of cautious with of how long, right? Some of these projects, you know, the entitlement's over 10 years, I mean, sometimes, and also the conditions and requirements that were placed on some of these projects, they need to be revisited sometimes because even the built environment around them has changed. So really, it is trying to, when we do look at time extensions, we do kind of try to balance that or reflect changes. Well, like, an example of this is Golden Gate Transits and the Transit Center. Like, there's a couple of projects that were entitled before Golden Gate's proposal. So reflecting some of the design changes that will come about that, those need to be captured. So we just actually did that on one of our projects to make sure that they recognize the change in the built environment for Tampa Pius. So because what was entitled isn't what's going to be built because we have newer information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So the first one's around ADUs. I see in one of the charts that there have been entitled and permitted but not being completed, so I'm curious if that is additional support? Because ADUs traditionally are done by homeowners, so if it's the county or the city that's providing the ADU support to have them be completed, is the first question. The second part is, I could not recall, and I couldn't tell from the tables, if those count towards our RENA, and how would you put them in the chart in terms of the low-income, very low-income?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question. It's very easy, by design, to entitle an ADU. In San Rafael, we make it a building permit. The planners just do a plan check on the building permit, so we go as quickly as possible. It's much harder to build an ADU, and I will tell you that it's, so when you convert a garage, for example, garages are built to store stuff. There is no building code, seismic, energy code, all of that has to kick in when you would go from housing your electric vehicle, for example, to housing your grandmother. So that's a very expensive, and it's oftentimes, we are working with, there's a county collaborative, and we have a website, a page on our website that hooks right to them in terms of FAQs and, well, how do, people see the, they see the dream, right? They see this, there's so many things that are involved with accessory dwelling units, right? You can pay for your retirement, you can age in place, you can send your kid to college. The rent, it's, there's, it's a lot of things that people see when they see ADUs. The devil's in the construction. And helping people understand the pitfalls, helping people understand that they're becoming a landlord, there's a lot to understand on your way to being a successful ADU owner. We are, current, new state law has asked us to produce pre-approved plans, and we're doing that. We are working with other cities in our county and our county itself to give common sense responses to questions for homeowners that are working on this right now. And it's a continuing, we're always trying to do that better. But it's usually more money and always more time than what they thought when they started the process. That's what we, that's the feedback we get over and over.
And so the ones that are being, the three that have been built, so do they count towards RENA? And then also have a follow-up question, do they get the extensions, really building what Councilmember Hill was talking about in terms of the entitled and permitted, given all of the financial considerations?
Absolutely. So once a building permit is issued, you have 180 days to start breaking ground, and that's defined a number of ways, but basically, you know, anything to do with a hammer will vest your building permit, so I'll put it that way. We, I work closely with our building official. I know that he's, if anyone has any reason at all why they need to extend a building permit, he absolutely supports that. It's very clear in the Community and Economic Development Department that we are pro-housing, and we will do anything we can within our reach to make someone successful at adding more housing to our city. And yes, these numbers do show up for our RENA numbers, both above moderate and in the low-income, non-deed restriction category, you'll see some ADU showing up as entitled. It's just how the tables work. Table A shows one thing, and Table A2, yeah, it gets like that.
That's important to note, they count.
They do count, and the smaller ones de facto count as low-income, non-deed restricted, which is a category that's harder to hit. And I will say, from my experience being in planning for a few decades, the very low-income requires grants from the state. So that's the other aspect of this, is there's grant cycles that our development teams are trying to align with, because the amount of subsidy you need to have is something that's almost impossible to bring from our market economy at this time. So it's, there's so many parts and pieces on the distance between an entitlement to a certificate of occupancy.
Well, thank you for that additional information. So moving on to a different type of unit, so senior living units, senior housing. And we are blessed here in San Rafael to have the ages going up, and we have quite a few, and I know there's been an ongoing discussion of if, how we have those count towards RENA. So I'm under the assumption they still don't, and I would love any insight. It is something- It is something that I know we all bring up to our state legislatures. But I'm curious if you've seen, heard of any movement there. So having those unions that don't have a full kitchen because they have a congregant shelter internally to have them counted in our RENA numbers.
I think there's been some marked progress on that. And this really came about when we were looking at our 1515 Senior Housing Project entitlement. HCD has actually given some, you know, leeway on what they count as units. So I think we just have to be clear about what that is. I do think it is, it's supporting or working with HCD about that. Because I think they've recognized that also, like it is providing housing to a level. So I still think there's more work to be done on that. But we've seen some indication from HCD or the willingness to actually look at that a little deeper to count those numbers. So now, we've yet to actually move that forward for construction. But I do think from accounting of the units, those are definitely an argument on our standpoint to work with HCD staff to support that interpretation of really what units count.
So would that be a situation that you would put it into one of these really big charts with a note and hope that they agree with it? Or would you wait until they blessed it? I'm just trying to figure out, we push this because we have so many of these units here. This has been ongoing from the dais.
Absolutely. This year, we only counted the ones with a kitchen because that is the established state law. So of the entitled project for 1515 Fourth Street, in the entitlements, I think it's, I shouldn't guess, but it's around 150 some odd units that do have a kitchen. And then there's the ones that you're referring to, that memory care type units where they do not. So we are working with HCD to keep pushing them towards it, but that's not in this year's count.
Okay. Well, maybe just think about putting another little line in that big spreadsheet. The very last question, you had mentioned the Rooted in Marin draft report. And it tears off of, or builds on what Councilmember Yurans Gulati was asking. Because in that report, they have quite a few tenant protections and programs. And you said it was a draft. Is there a place where people can comment on that report? Or is it more just a draft because it's going to be finalized by the entities? I'm curious where people could go to find that. When I read it, I was very impressed by the level of detail that we can build on. So I'm just, I want to get more information on that.
I will say that that report's structured, it's really a city-county with multiple jurisdictional partnerships. I believe it's really up to the cities, like it's a toolbox opportunity for cities to utilize. I believe it's, I think those comments are open through their website for other input. But then for city staff, as we bring these forward, at least for council consideration or subcommittee consideration, that those would be the opportunities to save of these various tools. Which one would Santa Fe like to evaluate?
And just to echo what Director Hinkle just said. It is currently on the Rooted in Marin website. And why I didn't mention it is the comment period ends tomorrow. So you'd love to rush right home if you wanted to add comments to the draft.
Well, and even if officially the comments, oh, end tomorrow, we're always, of course, interested in what the community would have to say about that. If it sounds like we will also adopt a version of that at some point in the future from this, from the dais.
Absolutely, yes. And the next step would be to take the information that they've gained from the countywide deep dive and then refocus on our city. And what may be, from this toolbox, what would really work for San Rafael that wouldn't necessarily be helpful, you know, in other cities?
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor Kate. One thing I wanted to actually call out for RENA numbers in terms of pipeline, like rough numbers about like what's in the pipeline on development projects, probably around 850 units, so.
Eight fifty?
Eight fifty.
In addition to Northgate, so over and above Northgate.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, you have another question?
I do. As you mentioned, 1515 Fourth Street. So that, and at the beginning, it talks, you haven't, those aren't counted towards RENA? Because the building permit hasn't been issued yet, but they've been entitled.
Correct, that's an entitled project, yes.
So can you give us sort of a highlight in terms of what's happening right now? In terms, are they working towards the building permits or is that not happening? So this is one of those projects that we sort of wonder, right? We went through a lot of work to get that approved. Where is it at today?
Just briefly working through this, it's, they actually are a participant of our Economic Development Go program. So we're feeling out the different options that they have. So I think there'll be a point where we'll have a formal application for them or maybe building permits or otherwise, we can report back at that time.
Any other questions? No. Okay, not seeing any other questions. We invite the public to comment on this item with their own comments or questions. So if you would like to comment, public comments now open, come on down.
I don't know what to say, John Reynolds from the canal. The percentages are not good. I see that. And the time, I guess, the 10-year. And having 1515 Fourth, it wasn't permitted. So it can't be included as a place that we could develop. I don't know, that's what I hear, hearing. We should be positive about the homeless shelters or the transitional housing and the Kerner and the former, you know, the other one. And other places like Lincoln, you know? I'm not think, I don't think we're part of the Oakmont, Oakwood development. Are we part of that? I'm not sure. I don't think we're part of that. But ADUs and the render protections, that's really, it went down in Corte Madera and Fairfax and San Anselmo to increase the possibility of not going up high. So we can readdress that. I'm very concerned. But let's look at the positive, see what we can do. The money didn't come forward in the bond measure, so we're still working on that. I'm going to still work on that. We talked to a lot of people, MOC, to move that forward. So the funding is going to have to become and that's, we're going to continue to work on that, MOC. So we're going to be in there with you and move it forward. Thank you for doing what you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you for that very thorough presentation, very informative. I just want to reiterate what you were saying about, you know, having all levels, all levels of housing that are accessible for all types of incomes and fixed incomes. You know, just thinking about that Northgate project and, you know, me being in a BMR unit below market rate, it's been a wonderful experience. But, you know, from what it sounds like, that Northgate project is going to be really expensive for anyone to get into, like top-tier kind of, you need top-tier kind of expenses compared to other similar projects. So, you know, a BMR unit at a place like that might cost like $400 to $600,000 is my guess. You know, at that time, you know, for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, it's, I don't know how many people who are, you know, living paycheck to paycheck or fixed incomes can afford, you know, 80 grand or 120 grand for a down payment. So I just encourage you to find creative ways to get people into housing. You know, I lived in a garage for years, for a couple of years as an undergrad. And, you know, my experience is like, as long as the washer dryer isn't running when I'm in there, you know, that's, that's pretty, it's pretty doable. So, but yeah, so that's really key. It's like, we got, I don't know if anyone has ever done a study here about how many people actually live on a, you know, live on a per paycheck basis kind of thing. It would be interesting to hear that. 15% low-income threshold, I think that came out at the study session. You know, I would, I would hope that would be a minimum bar in terms of every new housing complex, if I'm saying this right, has a 15% low income. And don't cut down trees, that ordinance or whatever is going to come out. Encourage people to keep trees, otherwise they're going to cut them down. Anything that discourages people, they cut it down.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Any other comments regarding this agenda item? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comments and bring it back to my colleagues for additional comments before a motion. Vice Mayor, additional comments on this item? No? Councilmember Kurtz?
I'd like to just echo again, the, we hear about, it's the, from the city's perspective, it's, we hear projects don't make it through because of the cost of the project to the developer to deliver. And I think that's true. I think we hear from the developer side, the challenge that the city puts, because we have the permitting and the requirements around that, that's probably true too. So somehow, we need to figure out how to move these forward. And I'd like us to consider and look at different opportunities that are available in other jurisdictions where we're seeing different programs to encourage building. I have, I mean, there's a lot out there, I have no idea. But I'd love at an opportunity to look at that, even if it's on a pilot basis for a single project. So, because we need to figure out how to get things delivered. Because I think we have two truths and we're not getting to an answer yet. And we will be back here again and there'll be one or two units, or one and two units. And that's just not, and we have the RENA requirements, that's fine. We need housing. We just need housing and we need to figure out how to get there. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, comments?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Margaret and Director Hinkle for your testimony today and answering all of our questions. I want to compliment you, Margaret, specifically. It is very clear that the number of years that you've been focused on helping communities navigate housing is coming through. And this council, all staff, and I think our community benefit from your wisdom and experience, which is wide and deep. So I appreciate what you're sharing. And a lot of the nuance of what comes through in your testimony is even just taking a step way back from the legislation and HCD enforcement. What is clear is that even if none of that existed, there are issues in our community around what would mean if we could push a button and housing could exist for all sorts of personas in our community. When we think about transportation congestion on our rights of way, right-of-ways and vitality of downtown and other parts of our community. If we could have people live in place and not have to commute in and do all the things that have, that exist today, our community would look very different. And while the legislation, I think we would all agree, is imperfect in terms of how it looks in Marin with AMI being so high. I'd like to point out at least a nuance that the, it is not a binary of, even though it looks this way on paper, affordable or not affordable. A lot of the units are affordable by design. So imagine stock that either studio or a single bedroom. While not everybody can say immediately go in, there is a path for many in our community that couldn't otherwise afford what's in our single-family stock. That if we had more availability in our downtown area that's dense and affordable by design, we would be in a much better place. So all this is to say that legislation notwithstanding, I think that we're doing the right thing by our community to navigate what is a very tricky thing. Whether it's for-profit or nonprofit, it is very, they all have to pencil out. Even, even very low-income units must pencil out for the nonprofit. It just has to be the case. So I appreciated your testimony on that, Margaret, that those dollars are very difficult to come by. So while the legislation is imperfect, I believe that we're doing right by our community to make certain that we're trying to find the right places in our community for dense building and making certain that we're trying to achieve balance with the knobs and dials that we have. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurans Gulati?
Yes, thank you so much again for the report. I think there are like a few highlights from, not only from the housing, but also for the Plan 2040. In the, in the housing, I, you know, we have our RENA numbers that we have to meet. So, and that's, I guess, I think all the cities, we are all facing the same thing. But we need housing and I think we need to really be open to current houses that maybe they were built in the 50s, like in the 70s, they need to be remodeled. And I think they can be transformed as a way to open the market, the units for housing in our community. We see a lot of people that they are housed. We have the issue with ceiling rise that we are going to get a report, I guess, around June. And that potentially has, might displace even more people. So I think we really have to be creative. If there are people that they are living, you know, in a house with four bedrooms and now they are like empty nesters, what's happening there? Can we, I think the JDU, ADU, the state is definitely coming in to tell us how we can expand housing around that. But I would really like to see, and I guess we'll see that in the report when you have it. Also, the progress that we have on remodels and upgrades. I know that there are great nonprofits like Cana Alliance that is doing a really good job at purchasing buildings and remodeling them, keeping them like low income. And then everything that we can do around tenant protections just to make sure that people are going to stay housed. We don't want any more people in the streets. Another big goal for me, and I think for our city, is again, like our green spaces, in particular, the three canopies around climate change mitigation. It's not just that it's pretty, but it's one of the best ways to sequester carbon. And I think it's a big inequity in our city. And so I would really love to prioritize, and we can talk more about it during the goals and objectives for the city, but I would really like to prioritize this inventory, you know, for one of the tops that we have in the next three years. Because I think it's really necessary. There is a lot of heat in the summer that's happening and it would really improve our quality of life, not to mention that it can really help maintain the health of our soils to sequester even more carbon. And which takes me to water retention. I would love to also see how we can educate people, the same that we are doing around wildfire. And wildfire is another item that we have to keep the trees in mind, how we can keep safety into place. So I think it's a good opportunity right now around wildfire, tree canopies and water retention to make sure that when it rains, we are capturing as much water as possible and that the new developments for housing will also keep that in mind. So when we have king tides and storms and ceiling rise, you know, we don't get overwhelmed with that. And then I just wanted to mention the role of the county and how they can support our efforts as well. And especially around an inventory of rentals in San Rafael. Because I think that would be very helpful for us to get data and get a more accurate, you know, description of where we are right now or inventory. So, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, thank you, Margaret, and thank you, Director Hinkle. This was a great, great report. And I know we focused on the RENA numbers because HCD really loves these reports. And for those who haven't read the staff report, the snapshot on what was done in General Plan 2040 over 2024 is so readable and it's bullet points, but it really shows the breadth of work, both in housing, but also we talk about homelessness. You talk about sustainability, there's, you touch on every, almost every single element of the general plan. So I didn't want that to get lost in our very intense conversation around housing, which is important around the RENA numbers. And I was realizing that the housing element was just approved in 2023. So it's, it's brand new. So, so thank you for capturing that information. And this is just such a great document, showing that we are making progress. Yes, of course, we'd always want to have it farther than it is. But what I see here is momentum building off of a really good general plan that was approved just in 2021. So, thank you. This is a report and I would accept a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the general, the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, highlighting progress on the policies and programs identified in the city's general plan and the city's progress towards meeting its share of the regional housing need allocation and direct staff to present the report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
For the mayor, just a quick clarification.
Wait, wait, oh, go ahead.
Just to make sure we capture that, Northgate number adjustment.
Oh, yes, with the, with the correction in the Northgate authorized total.
Second. Thank you. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Gulati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. Our next agenda item this evening is an update on the draft, Terry Linda Park and Community Our next agenda item this evening is an update on the draft Terra Linda Park and Community Center Enhancement Plan. Look forward to learning more. Folks, change the seats. Director Kufa, when you're ready, you can introduce your team and this item.
All right, good, good, good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. I'm Catherine Kufa, the Library and Recreation Director for the City of San Rafael, and I'm here tonight to introduce the item. It's an update on the Terra Linda Park and Community Center Enhancement Plan. Quite a mouthful of a, of a name. I'm really excited to be providing the update on this project, and this is something that grew out of our citywide park and recreation master plan, which was adopted in 2023 by the council. In the master planning process, we identified the need to really put together a future thinking plan around the Terra Linda Park. It was identified as a high priority for a number of reasons, it is our only community park in North San Rafael, and by community park, that's a definition from our General Plan 2040, which is somewhat about size, but also about number of amenities on a site that it serves multiple neighborhoods and the number of visitors it attracts. The Terra Linda Park and Community Center has a community center, an aquatic center, playground, a basketball court, and many other recreational amenities, all in 2.9 acres. It is a well-loved and well-used site, the community center was built in the 1950s, the playground was last updated in 1998, so it, it's, it's showing its age, there's a lot of amenities that need to be updated. And at the same time, we're hopefully, based on the, the report we just received, going to be seeing significant growth in North San Rafael, and this is the primary place where our community comes to recreate in the area. With it being a smaller site, we want to be really intentional and really creative about how we design and implement improvements moving forward. So, about a year ago, we brought on Gates and Associates to help with the planning process, and I'm here to introduce Melanie Reynolds, who will present kind of what we've been doing over the past year and where we are with the plan.
Thank you, Catherine, good evening, councilmembers, mayor. As Catherine mentioned, I'm Melanie Reynolds with Gates and Associates. We are landscape architects and planners out of Walnut Creek. We have been working with the city as well as Group Four, our architect, you'll hear from Dawn shortly, on this enhancement plan. There are several of my team members who are not here tonight, planners and outreach coordinators and all that good stuff. But we've been working for the last year to really put together what we're going to share with you tonight. Briefly about the project, I know you guys had a pretty big packet about this. We were, we kicked off the project in about March-ish of last year, so it's been about a year, like full 12 months. And we ran two, we run kind of two processes at the same time, there's a planning process, that's really us behind the scenes, looking at what you have, working with staff, talking to stakeholders, or, you know, sometimes you guys and other city staff members about what your, what the park is like now, what could, you know, be better about it, what's missing, what's really working, and then at the same time, we run a community engagement piece, and that's where we go out to the community and ask questions, you know, what do you want, what do you like, what do you want to see here? Once again, what's working, you know, what would be awesome to have in this park? And so, we have gone through the first three rounds of what we call our planning process, and we're now, you can see in the arrow, does it have a thing up right here? We are here, we're kind of in the public review, we've gone out to the community a couple times, and come up with some iterations that we would like to share with you on where we've landed. So in round one and round two of outreach, that happened in summer and fall of 2024, we reached approximately 900 participants, which is amazing, there were two community surveys, three pop-up events at various places, four community meetings, virtual and in-person, and then a public meeting as well. And so you can see some of the fun collateral and flyers on here. This picture over here is actually of a dot board from one of our in-person events. And so you can see that the turnout was really great, the community is really invested and interested in this site, and so it was great to hear from them what they'd like to see. So what did we hear, right? Okay, so some key themes that we heard that, out of the various events and surveys that we did during round one, play is really big, nature is really important, community gathering opportunities onsite, modernization, Catherine mentioned it, a lot of the things are pretty aging and looking a little tired, comfort and safety, and then flexibility, flexibility and synergy, we just know with such a tight site, it has to really be flexible and, and kind of, kind of have a little bit of, have to have a little bit of a crystal ball of how people are going to want to use this in the future, so that we provide and design spaces that, you know, change with the changing demographics and, and trends in recreation. So, some things that we heard, that's kind of starting over here, the top three favorite existing amenities, what they currently have, the community thought the playground was their, their favorite, next was the lawn for informal play space, and then trees and plants. This site has an amazing mature tree canopy, and so it's not surprising that the community, you know, loves it, and, and it was a favorite of theirs. Some of the top three most desired new amenities, so what would people want to see in this new design? Shade structures, I mean, shade is a thing, right, we know it's only getting hotter. Informal seating, so we're talking seating other than like picnic tables, and then outdoor games, so, things they can do outside with small groups and, and kind of stay really social. We also act, asked about recreation programs as we were looking at the building itself. So at the community center, people, their favorite current rec programs are arts and crafts, enrichment classes, and then special events. So for round two, we kind of take all the information, we take what we learned by visiting the site, what we learned by talking with the staff, and then kind of our knowledge of park and recreation planning, and we came up with three concepts that we then went out and presented to the community as part of what we called round two. This first one, you can see, is a new single-story community center, so in the approximate same location of where your current community center is. An expanded playground that is adjacent to an open lawn area, picnic tables around the playground, multipurpose gathering area, it's kind of here, adjacent to the community center, a large reservable picnic area adjacent to that, that gather space, a half-basketball court, and then a central node, which really is just kind of a, the hub of your park, everything kind of flows out from there. It's, it's like a little bit of an organizing, organizing element. You can see the proposed layout of the building down before, or down below, so there's a meeting room, visual and fine arts, staff spaces, a conference room, and really what we thought was important, a through lobby, so you can see through into the park, I think anyone who drives by right now, you don't even know really there's a park back there, it's like, oh, so, we thought the, the visual corridor was really important. The con, the second concept we came up with is a new, larger building in this L shape. It's an additional 45 to 6,500 square foot with indoor and outdoor access. Another, or a larger playground, roughly in the same area, but a bit expanded. Once again, picnic tables around the playground, an expanded open lawn area. Once again, another reservable picnic area, this one is adjacent to the playground. Once again, another multipurpose gathering plaza immediately adjacent to the new community center to allow for really that indoor-outdoor access, this kind of central organizing element here, which is very much near, as in the other one, the pool entrance, and then a new entry plaza, so this one is really open more to the street, and you can really see into the park, and, and everything that is, you know, planned for that. And then you can see a layout with the building, the proposed layout, so there's a meeting room, enrichment, health and fitness, and then a visual and fine arts room with access to an outdoor yard. Once again, that through lobby, and then staff and support space. So the third option is a two-story community center. The second floor would be a library, so the first floor is very much like I just showed you in concept two. A more centralized, expanded playground, picnic tables around the playground again, reservable picnic area under those existing trees, a half-basketball court kind of tucked into this new, once again, plaza area. And then this, once again, another kind of cool tree-lined plaza that really draws you into the park and, and lets you see, you know, kind of creates this, this whimsy, and this, I want to be there, what's in there, when you're kind of driving and walking by. Oh wait, we'll talk about, okay, and then the building, like I said, is, the, the first floor is the same as what I just showed in concept two, and then the library is on the second. So what did we hear from that, what, how did people respond? Overall, the preferred concept was concept C, we heard people love the library, they loved the the openness and the indoor-outdoor and the arts yard. And then, we also asked, though, what pieces of the other concepts did you like the best? Because we know that no, no one really likes the whole thing as it is, right? It's like, oh, I like that piece, and I like that part of that, so we thought it was really important to understand the parts and, and pieces and amenities of the other designs that people liked. So, from concept B, people really liked where the playground was, and the size, as well as the picnic area. And then concept C, which is the one that most people preferred, people liked the half-basketball court, the gathering area and the plaza, and then the second-story community center, or the two-story community center. So from that, we take all of that information, we kind of go back to the drawing board, chat with your, your staff again, and, and we've come up with this draft concept. It kind of meshes those likes from, from both concepts B and C, as those were the most preferred. And you can see we have this 11,500 square foot community center, two-story. We have this really nice central plaza with a basketball court, there's an enlarged play area, and then a new informal lawn, and then kind of this new little game area on the side over here, and I'll go through those on the next slide. So if we're looking at the playground, picnic, and lawn area, the playground's largely in the same space, we've just increased the footprint a bit to provide, you know, more play activities and really maximize the amount of play that can be near and under the trees, so we, we get as much shade as we can. There is a new informal lawn area here, number four, we kind of want to flatten it out, fix it out, maybe get rid of some of those gopher holes and, and things like that, make it a little bit more usable, and then directly under the trees, the existing trees in the middle is the new reservable picnic area. And then over here, plan left is a, like a game area, so it's a flattened lawn area. There's a retaining wall, because it's a bit sloped over there, where people can maybe go play cornhole or, or whatever. They want to do another area for, you know, recreating onsite. This one also, well, if this preferred plan, we kind of looked at how we can make the entry up into the aquatics a little, a little more comfortable and, and clear and accessible. So then, as far as the plaza gathering and community center, so once again, you can see this L-shaped community center building, there's this really kind of cool indoor-outdoor, or outdoor arts yard, which Dawn will talk about, building in that relationship shortly. A half-basketball court, and, you know, there's a bit of a grade change between these two areas, so there's this really cool kind of stepped seat wall between the two that allows you to, that kind of that informal seating that we heard people want, and also allows for flexibility in events and community events for people to sit, as well as if you want to watch, you know, and hang out while playing basketball. You can see there's kind of this wide access now into the park, so that you can see into it, it also allows for emergency vehicle access, as well as possibility of food trucks and vendors. And then, like I said in the last slide, kind of this reworked accessible entry, kind of up to the next level of the park.
With that, Dawn?
Yep. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Dawn Marcus with Group Four Architecture. And so really, the program for the building is directly derived from what we heard from the community. The highest vote getters, or the fine arts, the community celebrations, as well as fitness and exercise and enrichment classrooms. And so those really kind of created the base program for this building, understanding that we want to plan for change, that needs and activities, programs, services are going to evolve with time, just like we are not doing what our predecessors, our earlier generations did for recreation. So starting with that, we have the street, Delgado Road is along the bottom of our plan, and our first floor is here to the left, with the second floor and that kind of ochre color on the right. We have staff kind of central, visible, good eyes on every piece of the building, even being able to see out to the park as well. And that, as Melanie explained, having a kind of a transparent lobby, an indoor-outdoor lobby that can also act as a secondary gateway to the park was important. On our left side, we then have a conference room that can be, it, it's the smaller meeting room in this kind of array suite of rooms that we've created here. It can support things happening in lobby, it can support pre-function space in the community room, it can function all on its own as well. Our community room is about 3,000 square feet, is divisible into two, has a catering kitchen to support it as well, and can support larger fitness activities, classes, in addition to community celebrations, separate programs going on on either side of that, and it can be opened up completely to the plaza, so that it can be total indoor/outdoor, you can even get added capacity there. On the right side of the building, behind staff, we have fitness and health space, kind of multipurpose fitness room that can be used for all different activities as well, our core restroom, circulation core, storage spaces, enrichment classroom, again, multipurpose, multi-use room. And then as we go to the top, is the fine arts and ceramics room. And really, hugely popular program that's happening, they're hugely successful, and really trying to create a space that works for that, and so we actually have a kiln room, we actually have a glaze room, we have the outdoor space that can also support additional ceramics, as well as storage and programming as well as there. As we go to the stair and go up to the second floor, you can see then that becomes the library. And so the library can be used in conjunction with just the lobby, everything else secured off, so there is independent access possible. And then upstairs, we have another small program room, group study spaces, as well as collection, collaboration spaces, and just reading and studying spaces. As we go to the next slide, trying to share some of the visuals, kind of the vision for the facility, taught, starting at the top left, that kind of interior-outside kind of integration, it's kind of what we call the one plus one equals three space, right? You can use the room by itself, you can use the outdoor by itself, and you can use them together and even get added benefits in that community meeting room. Kind of creating that paseo along the side of the building between the aquatics facility, really a great opportunity to activate the park and connect to that with the building as well. And then just a really functional multipurpose room that can be used for all the different things that I just mentioned on the previous slide. Totally flexible is really the key here. And then moving over, you can see the multipurpose health and fitness room, as well as a vision for the ceramics room, even though we're planning for all the ceramics and the functions of the ceramics, still planning for it to be flexible and adjustable as needed. And then lastly, just creating a real presence on the street. You know, driving by this facility, it's, it's kind of the opposite of welcoming at this point. And if you can see into these activities, if you can see what's going on in community centers today, they're really magnets for the communities, and they really create that third space that so many of us are looking for today.
Questions or comments?
We'll have both, I'm sure. Yeah, thank you, Melanie, thank you, Dawn. So we'll start with questions, Vice Mayor Bushy.
Question, I have two questions, and they're both about things that aren't in your report. So, I noticed that the pool in the aquatic complex is not really addressed at all. If I'm recalling correctly, we recently, relatively recently, um, redid it, so I'm deducing that there was a strategic plan to not do anything with the pool area.
Yeah, I think as you rightly called out, the pool was more recently done in comparison to the rest of the facility. We felt that the pool is adequately serving the community need that we have right now. We, of course, are still, I mean, just talking with Director Miller about some upgrades to the pool room and the pump room, so we're, we're still continuing to, you know, to maintain and, and improve that facility, but we felt like the, the footprint, we, we didn't want to come in and build a new pool, that's hugely expensive and probably unnecessary at the moment. We did consider kind of how the pool impacts the rest of the site, when you've got a hot day, when you've got a big swim meet, the pool spills out into the, into the park, and so some of the, those central gathering nodes, the reservable picnic areas, the seating throughout is really intended to support that use of the, of the facility as well. But we did want to just be clear, we're not looking to build a new pool at this point, we're really focused on the
We're really focused on the other areas of the park that are in greater need of, of improvement.
Very good. Thank you. The other thing that's missing is any discussion of the cost of these proposals or where, or the funding, potential funding sources. Is there a another phase?
There is another phase. Yeah. So after we receive feedback from the council, we're going to go refine and really finalize these plans. And in the final stage of the, of this process, it will be working on the cost estimates, the funding strategies. And there's the phasing plan was in there, but we'll be finalizing that as well, kind of part of the same process. So I, you know, I think there's a number of funding sources we're looking at. Measure A is always the first one for a park and recreation facility improvements. Of course, that's not going to be enough to build a new community center, right? I think, you know, one of the, one of the things we've been looking at, one of the reasons for this study was the planned growth in North San Rafael. And in addition to additional recreational usage, there is also the opportunity for additional development impact fees to support park and recreation improvements. So that's another funding source we're evaluating and hope to have more information on when we come back.
And what's your level of confidence that there'll be something in the neighborhood of what will be needed to take this, this plan forward?
I, it. Well, we know North Gate's moving forward, which is a large, I think that our hope is there will be funding to support at least a good portion of this project. So where that, and we hope by the time we come back with the final plan to be able to kind of nail that down more, more specifically. But our, you know, part of our planning for the park impact fees is to identify what our needs are. And that's one of the things we are doing with this plan.
And when you get to the stage where, the phase where you have the costs, is there an ability to prioritize based on, once you know the costs of the different elements?
Yes.
And to refine? Okay.
Yes, there will be. So this is, at this point, it's just a conceptual plan. So as we move forward and we have a better sense of funding availability, we'll be able to prioritize the different elements and different phases of the plan and, and how we move them forward.
Yeah, looks like a great concept.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Kurt's questions?
Thank you. I have probably more comments than questions. On the fa, the last page that has the phases, is that identifying, can you indicate like what phase would go first? Yeah, the timing, not necessarily the timing, but would you recommend like blue goes before yellow or yellow goes before blue? I wasn't clear. I just thought you, maybe it was, not, wasn't sure if those were actually phasing or it could be considered independent projects.
The latter. They could be considered independent projects. And that was one of the things we wanted to be sure to do with this plan was to identify opportunities for improvement at varying cost levels.
That's why you also kind of see the funky dividing lines. So some thought was, went into if this first, how does it not fully impact and, you know, blow up the other area? So that now you have to continue, you know, scope creep type of thing. So yes, there was thought put into.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuvren Galati, who want to go next?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I love the concepts and I'm so happy they went for the Concept C because I'm like, I like the sea. So I'm very happy to see that. Oh, sorry. I just get so excited about parks and green spaces. Okay, so my question is around the grass. I see that that is one of the most important things that they have. And I guess just thinking about like probably once we remodel, this park is going to stay there for like a few years, like maybe a couple of decades or more. And our climate change, we are looking into the weather of Santa Barbara as the new weather for San Rafael. So I'm a little bit concerned about the grass. Also, the Marine Municipal Water District is maybe proposing a ban on decorative grass. So I'm just curious to see how much is like, if this is what the community wants, how can we give it to them in a way that maybe is going to require less water? There are some alternatives to that?
Well, one thing to consider is that the Terre Linda Park being in North San Rafael, it is already watered by reclaimed water. We do a purple pipe there. So that is, I would need to confirm the exact regulations, but I do believe there's more flexibility there. And it, this would not be considered a decorative lawn. This would be active, similar to our sports fields and things like that.
Okay. So, so are they, like, did they mention why they wanted to have a grass? Are they going to lay down? Are they going to play soccer?
I think it was a lot of both. So you have a lot of young families, right, who kids are playing on the playground and they run on the lawn. I believe you guys have an informal soccer practice happen? No? Well, someone, somewhere, someone, you know, the informal pickup stuff. There's the huge spillover that we were talking about from the, the swim meets, you know, that lawn area. It's heavily used by them. And then, yeah, I mean, people just, people like lawn, right? I mean, so the idea of losing that and, and, you know, was, was kind of hard. And, and if we can find a way to give them that kind of other, you know, active use. Yeah, people were interested in that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm not a big fan because I think also it requires a lot of chemicals to keep it alive and there's not much life in lawns, you know, but I do understand the community wants something. So maybe there could be some options in there.
Yeah, I mean, if I can speak a little bit to that, there's, this isn't going to get built tomorrow. And there's changes that happen in lawn and, and what we're growing yearly. And there are drought tolerant options currently that actually would probably do quite well here with a little bit of shade. There's all these things. So I'm hopeful that by the time, you know, construction documents and then we get into implementation, there's, there's some really good options for us to consider.
That's great. Thank you. Another question, and it's a little bit related to funding, but once we get the number and, you know, I'm sure it'll be, you know, it'll be a number. So I wonder, there will be the parts that of course our city and our staff has to, have to do. But is there opportunity maybe through a volunteer coordinator to engage with the community where they can help planting or working on different projects? I know this is a little bit out of the box.
Do you mean during, like during construction or after, or after the fact?
Yeah, like depending on what construction it is, one, you know, I mean, obviously construction has to be done, you know, by professionals and all the liability. But if there is like, once you start like, I don't know, planting or I'm not sure what alternatives you have in there, there would be a possibility for the community to be involved.
I don't know about that. I think I'd have to talk with Director Miller and, and probably our city attorney and and our volunteer coordinator. So, but I think it's something we can note and, and keep in mind for the future. I know park volunteer opportunities are always really popular.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you for the presentation. There was a lot in the staff report too. My council colleagues answered four of the questions I had. I had seven, so I have three left. For, as I look at the map, taking a big step back and we look at, this is a major amenity for Terre Linda and North San Rafael. Is it sufficient for the current population and considering the North Gate, assuming that it all happens over the next 10, 20 years? Do we have a sense of amenity as it's used today and what an introduction of net new population would do to the, do to the amenity?
I think our hope is yes. You know, if you step back and look at development of recreation facilities in San Rafael over the next 10 years, we're going to see significant growth, both hopefully in North San Rafael as well as at our B Street Community Center. So I think when you're looking in totality, we are really going to be increasing and improving our, our rec, our library and recreation amenities for the community as a whole. I think probably when we do, I know in the final plan, we're going to be looking at kind of like the square foot per capita. What's it currently? What's it going to be? You know, given the projected growth, at least in North Gate and potentially others, we'll, we'll be able to pull some more data on that. I think we felt that we stretched the building size as much as we could, given the site constraints. And that that's really, we weren't comfortable going much farther than that, given the need for out, kind of balancing that indoor/outdoor. And how do we really maximize what we're able to offer on a small site? So.
Totally. I, I assume that was the case, but it leads me to my next question, which is when I look at just very back of the napkin, transportation options, say from North Gate to the community center. The fastest way is by bicycle. It's eight minutes. And then by walking half an hour. And then by car, you know, about the same as bicycle, which I thought was interesting. But if we look at the parking profile, is there any consideration for if we wanted to, say, really inspire and encourage cycling as a, as a means to get there? Is there a place for bicycle facility that we have in mind?
I don't have it shown on the map, but we've been talking about that and there would absolutely be. I know, I think actually in the central node, we show a little like bike fix-it station and, and bike racks so that your bikes aren't sitting on the street and they're in turn for the park and it brings you in and you're now there. So, yeah, I think that's a super big and an important part.
Awesome.
I would also just say that there is public transit within a close walk from the community center as well.
Totally. Yeah, I saw that as, as well, that that exists. And then as a final one, this is more of a question looking to either, but when we look at other communities that have so, I don't even know how to say, because I think we're all very special here. But for the things that people selected and prioritized, that square, I mean, obviously you keep an open mind as you approach community, but did it make sense to you what, what our community members selected?
Absolutely. Play, shade and, you know, indoor/outdoor relationship of a building are what we hear from everyone. So you guys were very in line, though very unique and special.
We are unique and special.
It is very much what we see in, in park planning these days and in what community, community needs.
Melanie.
Thank you. I just have a few final questions. So the, on parking, and you were, I thought you were going to ask, ask this council member help. So there's this very strange, small parking spot that's to the right of the building as you're looking at it. So I was curious if that was talked about to remove that in order to enhance the space or is parking so dire? I mean, if we're going to have enhanced biking, then again, might get people out of the car, but that was one thing that really struck me. It's such a strange lot, like you just don't want to hit the fence behind you or each other. So I was curious about that.
I think from an access perspective, the other parking lot is quite far away for anyone who might have mobility issues. And we do have large senior programming at the site. So that is a heavily utilized lot. It is the preferred lot for people to park at that community center. So yeah, and that is the ADA path of travel for the building and to get into the park. So I think removing, especially in the summer, when you've got the pool going and everything, parking is quite impacted at the site. And if we're expect, expecting enhanced usage, I think it is important to keep.
Great. Thank you. So I had questions around the library and it really does dovetail to the financial considerations that would be required to have a whole second story. I'm curious from that size of library, we have pop, we have a pop-up library downtown. We have a smaller library out at the Alborro Center. So I'm curious if there was an ability to have a library or to have a pop-up, so smaller square footage that still meets the basic needs on a single-story building.
So you're saying if we, if to incorporate the library into the first floor? You know, I think as Melanie, as we've kind of mentioned, this is where at the conceptual design stage. As we move forward and we do have a better sense of funding availability and where different funding pools for this project might come from. I think that is something we could evaluate. I think, so our initial thought for the library funding portion of this, Measure P, if there is sufficient funds to implement the Albert Park Library and Community Center, it does articulate that those funds can be used for branch library infrastructure improvements as well. So that is, you know, it will take us time to figure out if we've got the budget for the, the main project that Measure P envisions. But that is something we'll be looking at as well. So I think that is an option. The preferred option, given that the, the community's looking for expanded community center space, it would be the second story if we can make it work.
Hundred percent. I understand that. When you don't have dollar signs or the realities of constructing, you're going to have the big dream. So, so I'm trying to, to, to kind of recognize that and see if we can have a both and. I do know the pop-up library at North Gate's been successful. You know, probably more so than I thought it would be, given that Marin County has a library there. So I'm interested. But I'm just trying to figure out, yes, you wanted to add something else.
I was just going to add that this, this proposed second floor is not much bigger than the pop-up at North Gate.
Okay, but it is bigger than the one at Pickleweed or Alborro Center.
Yes.
Yes, because that one's pretty petite. I also, and this might be a question, and maybe this is too far in the future, but of course, when we think about more amenities, we need staff to staff those amenities. So if in the perfect world, the money all comes down and we have another library here, do additional staffing? Are we going to have to increase our employee headcount in order to staff this?
I think I'm probably not quite ready to answer that question at the, at this moment.
And you don't have to answer it, but I, but I want that as a comment. So because it's not just the facility, there are ongoing costs after it's been built.
Absolutely.
Okay. Madam Kate, I'll just chime in on that briefly. I think it is something that we would have to consider in, in bringing it forward, that the ongoing costs of that operation are significant. I would expect we would probably have to increase staffing, although Catherine's right, it's like, it's too premature at this point. But I think that's with, you know, consideration for this type of asset at that location has, has got some challenging aspects to it. And to your point, the staffing is one of them.
I, I think what I'm getting at is if the library is the straw that breaks the entire camel's back, I mean, that's the kind of information I think the, the council would want to know when we hear the next iteration. You're saying if we remove the library, as much as it's beloved and desired, but then it sinks the whole project, that to me is really important information to give the council the next round.
And then, just to respond to that, you know, I think we are intentionally approaching the final product with the library, with the second story as an optional kind of element. And so we're gathering the information on, on how we could move forward either way.
Okay.
So we would have that as we, and I, I think a lot of this again is, it's going to take us years to figure out how it, how, how it moves forward.
And that goes to my next and last question, because it does take years. So everyone's done the planning. They're all excited. They're ready for the groundbreaking to be tomorrow. So on the different building, what Councilmember Kurtz was asking, the different phases, has the community specifically weighed in? Because we're going to have to prioritize, most likely. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of how one phase doesn't interrupt the use of the other phase. So, or maybe the, the question is, can, will the community be able to weigh in? Because for us to prioritize doesn't make as much sense as the community saying, hey, these are the trade-offs.
We haven't specifically asked the community, which phase would you like to see happening first? But we did ask them which are their most important amenities. So, for example, in the yellow phase, that's where you'd get the expanded playground. You'd get the lawn and the reservable picnic area. So I would say that would bring, in terms of the, the pla, the park amenity improvements, that would probably come first. And then again, a lot of it will be dependent on, on funding availability and when funds are available.
Well, that makes sense too, because there's almost a more immediate benefit to the community, right? Rather than buildings which take, have a much longer timeframe. So that's. No, I just think this work, I know we're not to comment yet, but I think this work is really tremendous and really well laid out because there's a lot of information here. So there might be additional questions that come out from the public. So I will turn to the public. If you'd like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. And you're invited but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
So this park, is this, is this where the pool is by Scotty's Mar, okay? Yeah, that is a, that is a very hidden park. People who do know about that, wow, it's, it's like you got your own private place here. I'm just wondering about accessibility, accessibility for, I don't know, is this the proper term? The intellectually disabled? You know, I hear McGinnis Park, they're going to get a park that's suitable or addresses, you know, addresses, you know, people who are autistic, people of all sizes who are autistic. And so I'm wondering, you know, what this park does, or, or do people, or, or people are just expected to basically drive, you know, to McGinnis Park, or, you know, maybe take the smart pathway, but, um, the basketball court as a basketball person with broken knees, it's, you know, that half basketball court, if you want people to use it, I would, I would make it enticing. Glass, glass backboard, put, you know, that white square for the backboard, full-size backboard, you know, you, you see a lot of parks where they have this small backboard. You're trying to use the backboard, you can't, right? Um, if the ball is bouncing and it hits the grass, that's a dud. So I, I would say a full-size half-court where there's an out-of-bounds line and, and there's still, uh, more asphalt or whatever beyond that. A chain net, you know, if there's no net, no one wants to shoot there. So a chain net, I think is good. Uh, the building, I am concerned, just, I just don't, I just can't envision kids going outside, whether it be now or in the future, so. This building, it sounds like, I don't know, it's not there or, or whatever, but kid, kids may just gravitate, gravitate towards going inside and doing those indoor activities. I like the idea of, of a soccer field, full-size basketball court. We don't need more indoor activities.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this item?
Hello, I'm, uh, Michael Norton-Lindsey from Terre Linda. This is actually near my house and I've spent a lot of time there. Um, uh, one sort of comment and another comment that may lead to, to a question. The, um, I just sort of became aware of the rental rates for that space and I would hate for them to go up. Like, it would be great if the community felt like they could actually afford to rent the space to run events. Um, uh, and not be priced out of it. Um, uh, so sort of keeping those rental rates affordable. You know, if it's a big shiny new building and nobody feels like they can, you know, actually use it, that would be a shame. Um, uh, I also recently became aware of the shop, I think in Novato is sort of attached to the library there. It's a, like a makerspace or a, you know, repair shop. And I was wondering if, uh, that had been considered? Like, I know there's a lot of kids there that would work on stuff in there. And it's a great place for people to kind of meet and fix things and, you know, so anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Not seen any enclosed public comment, so there's a question about accessibility, just in general. Uh, a comment about rental fees, I don't think we can probably weigh in on what the rental fees are going to be of that building. And then, uh, the idea of a makerspace, whether that was considered.
Um, I think in terms of inclusive play, um, for a community park like this, um, I would expect that we would be striving for a very all-inclusive, um, play space. Um, that would be welcoming to children of all abilities um, and would have intentional design with elements for, um, for that. Um, as for the makerspace, I, Dawn, do you remember? I mean, we, we asked the community about a whole range of different things they would like to see. And I don't believe that makerspace, um, ranked highly.
Actually, yep, you could just speak in the mic. And that's fine, maybe it's just saying it didn't rank from what you heard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that specific question was actually even vetted with the community. But this is a very concept plan. And so even by the time you come to program this in two to three years, trends will change. And so it would be perfect time, as you're doing the program for this building, to go back to the community and refine the program for the library and the community center.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would, I'll just, one additional, um, thought there is that, as Dawn said, as we move forward with this and go into, um, deeper design, we would be vetting that. We would also be considering, as we move forwards with the Albert Park Library and Community Center, what, how we'll, how we're programming that building and how they can complement versus having the same program, programmatic elements at each building. So it might be a thing where Terre Linda is really more focused on the fine art ceramics, because we have such a well-established program there. And at Albert Park, we have a makerspace and other creative options.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any final comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks for the great update. Um, you've clearly done thorough outreach, um, and developed a very thoughtful plan that is very attractive. Um, and so I look forward to the, the next hard work, um, figuring out, um, how we could finance it and, um, actually bring it forward. Um, it will be, it will be great. I have one additional request. I didn't realize that you had access to recycled water there. Have you considered, um, dual plumbing the, um, building with recycled water for the toilets? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mary Kate. Uh, thank you Director Kufa, Melanie, uh, and Dawn for being here tonight to provide the readout. One year since it kicked off, this is a culmination of some great work. Uh, carrying forward some of the comments that the Vice Mayor just shared. Uh, this is, uh, a great example of community outreach, thoughtful way to, uh, conver, diverge before you converge. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And like the Vice Mayor said, I think we're all going to be interested in, um, what the path is to funding this, these, this marvelous, um, con, uh, notion of what, what could be done with this space. Uh, and again, indicating what the Vice Mayor said, uh, it is, uh, really wonderful that, uh, we can take advantage of recycled water here, that it does provide for, I think longevity for the, the lawns. Uh, and, uh, looking forward to this coming to fruition. So thank you for this, uh, update for the council.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yerem Scoladi?
Yes, I echo the sentiment. Uh, ve- very well done. Um, I look forward to hearing back about the funding. Um, I think sharing it with the community on different options, like the library is going to be this, you know? I think it's helpful for the community to, excuse me, um, sorry. Sorry about that. Maybe, um, for the community to be involved, um, in making decisions as well, because, um, or at least in priorities. Um, I think this is a great opportunity for nature and maybe have like a demo area with pollinators where people, homeowners can actually see some of the options that they might want to consider, uh, for their homes. Um, also, um, again, like the lawn, um, I'm glad that you might be looking for some alternatives or at least like try to reduce the surface of the, um, of the lawn in combination with, uh, other native plants. I think it would be really nice and trees, of course. Um, I have always thought that, um, our rentals, uh, for any property that we have, um, that we are very generous with the non-residents. And so maybe a consideration could be like our rents stay in our range that we have located to it, but maybe for the non-residents. And I know that this is not particularly for this specific project, but maybe for non-residents, it is a higher rate, you know, that can help the residents to, with that. And then the last one that I almost forgot is, uh, public art. Maybe this is a great space for public art that the community can participate. So thank you so much. Great project.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurtz is in District Four. We'd love to hear your comments.
Community is super excited. Um, they all, I, as Mayor Kate said, they, when is it going to be done? That's always the question. So thank you, thank you. And thank you for the amount of outreach you did. Um, with me, it's, uh, specifically as well as with the entire community, it was really valuable. I think, if I remember correctly, one of the questions was, what do you think about the, the, um, performance space? And most of us said, what performance space? So we didn't even know that there was a performance space there, um, which was really interesting. And I've also heard that people now have actually gone to the park. Cause they didn't realize what the park had to off, has to offer today and thinking about it for the future. So thank you for doing that. It serves a large community. Um, and a large, just wide area, um, for a park, for a community park. Many of, uh, from Terre Linda, some Freitas to Lucas Valley heading north, many of those families go to Marinwood. And even though if physically it's closer, we're not considered Marinwood and we pay the non-resident fee to use Marinwood. Um, and so people are actually really excited about the idea of being able to use, um, the Terre Linda Park more. So thank you. We're looking forward to it. And anything we can do to help will be appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll just, um, add in, great report. It's always nice to enable people to dream and to envision. And then we get the, now you have the harder task of reality. Um, but I know that, um, Councilmember Kurtz will stay involved in this going forward. And thank you. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Dawn, for being here. Thank you, Director Kufa. I would invite Councilmember Kurtz to make a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to accept the report with a big thank you.
Does she need to read?
Yeah, if you could read the title.
So the update, um.
I just have recommended action, accept the report.
Say the draft Terre Linda Park and Community Center grant plan.
Update the recommendation, update on draft Terre Linda Park and Community Center enhancement plan.
Thank you.
Accept the report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yerem Scoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you. Wow, you guys did that quickly. We were still working through this one. So the final item on our business, um, meeting tonight is the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project. I see Director Miller and Associate Civil Engineer.
Hello, uh, thank you, Mayor Kate, councilmembers. My name is Gray Melgarde. I'm an Associate Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works here at the City of San Rafael. I'm also the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project Manager. Um, here tonight to give an, uh, informational presentation, uh, a little bit of project history, a little bit of project overview, some budget and some next steps timeline for the project. So a little bit of project history. So the project is kind of a conglomerate of a number of city planning documents. One of them being the Canal Community-Based Transportation Plan, which identified the need for pedestrian, bicycle and transit upgrades in the Canal Neighborhood. Also included is the Citywide Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, which looked at some of the Bicycle Boulevard needs on some key streets. And in 2022, there were a couple of lighting workshop, excuse me, lighting workshops that were held with Minican, Voices to Canal, City of San Rafael and Canal Alliance for some of the, uh, proposed lighting improvements. So a little bit of a project overview, three kind of main components, pedestrian, bicycle and transit. In terms of pedestrian, uh, curb ramp upgrades, sidewalk gap closures, some lighting improvements and some of, and, uh, some enhancements to uncontrolled crosswalks along 19 streets and pathways. Bicycle, we're looking at Bicycle Boulevard treatments along three of those key streets and some new secure bicycle parking at Pickleweed. Uh, Transit, we're looking at enhancements for five shelters at high rider shop, ridership stops as well as a additional stop along a high-use transit route. This is just a bird's eye view of the project, so the project limits are outlined there in red. All the different elements we just talked about are kind of, um, identified on this map. This map, as well as the presentation, will be available on the project's website. So anyone who wants to kind of go in and do a deeper dive is welcome to. Uh, this little more project overview, um, so just kind of a rendering of existing versus possibility. So this is from BKF Engineers. Um, this is Louis Street, so one of those sidewalk gap closure opportunities for what the roadway might look like post-project. And again, this is all available if people want to give it another look. So BKF Engineers was selected as the design consultant after a competitive, uh, proposal process with the city. So we have BKF, we also have a team of sub consultants on the project, so environmental, traffic and geotechnical, as well as an outreach community liaison in the form of plan to place. Talking about budget, um, so the city was included in the fiscal year 2425 Capital Improvements Program. Um, this is that screenshot for the project. The project has received an Active Transportation Program Grant as part of Cycle Six. That grant amount is about $4.1 million. Um, and then we have the matching, the local match for that. Um, in total, project cost estimate is right around the 6.7 mark. Um, though that is a very kind of flexible number at this point, uh, while they're in the early stages of project development. Project timeline, next steps. Um, so right now, we're in the planning, environmental and outreach phase of the project, so 2025. Uh, design and outreach will start slash continue into 2026. And then construction, looking at sometime in the 2027, 2028 mark. And the big old asterisk on that construction. It's staff is currently engaging with PG&E on a corresponding Rule 20A project that's within the project vicinity, so making sure that those projects are aligned and brought together, uh, cooperatively. That is my very short and sweet presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Excellent presentation, especially with a great staff report. So thank you, Gray. We appreciate that. Uh, look my colleagues for any additional questions. Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, earlier in tonight's meeting, uh, the mayor discussed the, um, agreement with Marin Transit. Um, I wonder if you're working with them on, uh, coordinating the transit stops and all that they have in planned for, um, for that area, including their new building.
Yep, so, uh, definitely early phases of the project right now, but coordination with Marin Transit for those stops and the new location, um, definitely part of the process with them.
Okay, and I, I just have to ask, a $1.2 million design contract? Doesn't that seem like a lot?
Uh, so the, the design contract with BKF is actually the environmental, the design through construction support, so it's kind of a conglomerate. So maybe a three, four-year process with them.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the, the, so there, i- there's a lot of engineering work that's going into this. It's not just, um, uh, the basic design.
Yeah, I mean, design contracts are typically 25% of the construction or the total cost of the project. So if you look at it in that sense, sometimes it's 30%, so we're probably going to have a construction manager too, so that'll be the little bit of extra out of a, you know, 6.7 million, 1.2 is. If you look at it in that sense, it's in ballpark.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, questions? Councilmember Hill, questions?
Yes, along the lines of, uh, dollars. Uh, how did you arrive at the 6.7? What is your level of confidence? Cause I, I saw on the staff report, it reads, city has committed additional funding to augment the design and construction budget for the project. So I assume that there's some amount of contingency or, or fudge factor that needs to be considered. What are some of the considerations for why it might not land on 6.7?
Yeah, that actual grant application with our city match is closer to five and a half million, but we weren't sure at the time of the CIP whether or not we were going to have staff to complete this project. So we added in a buffer for more staff augmentation, like a project manager or, you know, scope creep and stuff. So there's a pretty large buffer in the current appropriated amount for the project. So that's why Gray mentioned it's, we'll, we'll kind of see it's about 6.7, but it could go all the way down to like 5.2, so.
Gotcha. And I think our collective experience, we seldom see projects go down, but I appreciate that there's hope for that. Um, and then, uh, attached to that, and I, Gray, I could read in your body later as it came through. Can you share a little bit more about the, what are some of the factors in the PG&E undergrounding coordination? Like what would, why does it have to be so well timed?
So cooperatively working with PG&E, um, we're aiming to try to get the project into their work plan um, at the start of next year, basically. And so their planning process for their design, their outreach, their coordination and construction is a factor in how our project progresses, specifically because the areas of impact for the undergrounding district kind of directly fall within the path of some of the areas of this project.
Uh, is there anything that, uh, this council can do to help to inspire PG&E to be, uh, more cooperative?
Uh, they are being very, we are working very closely with them. They are being very cooperative and they've been very helpful. Um, they have our dates in their work plan. So they are very aware of this project and what it means to our community and working with us to, to make sure it progresses appropriately.
Great, we can remind them that we are, uh, uh, paying ratepayers, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add, when, uh, we brought the undergrounding district to the, to the city council last year, it was like an eight-to-10-year timeline. So PG&E is very aware of our project and the fact that we have grant funds that need to be spent by a certain amount. They're really trying to work with us to expedite their schedule and get us on their, on the timeline sooner than. on the timeline sooner than that eight to 10-year mark. So three years would be amazing.
It'd be great for them to have a headline that they did something really wonderful in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Thank you, and I actually had the same questions around PG&E, a little bit concerned about that our project is depending on their project, but, but yeah, thank you. We're hoping, right? And I guess my question related to that also is around sea level rise, and we know that we're going to have some, we are going to have to do some work around sea level rise, so I don't know if PG&E is looking into that, especially because they are going to be digging when we are sinking, you know? And then how we are going to keep the project in mind, or we're just going to kind of like build it and hope for the best?
So this project is really, I'm just going to call it a maintenance project. We're replacing curb ramps, we're matching existing on either side, on the sidewalks, we're doing striping, we're doing some lighting. Nothing we're doing is really, we could substantially change to help with sea level rise. So I guess in that sense, we're not, I guess, not considering it because we're not doing massive improvements. I know 6.7 million sounds like a ton of money, but it's really not that much infrastructure that we are, are working on. I mean, PG&E is aware that we have a high water table in the area, so while they're designing the undergrounding project, they're going to have to consider that in their design. I know that's some of the hurdles that they, they deal with when they're designing projects, so hopefully, you know, that doesn't hold things up too much. So in that sense, they're going to be looking at sea level rise.
Okay, great. The other question I had is around the bike lane. Well, not bike lane, bike lane would be nice to have a bike lane, but I understand that in the canal, a lot of people are actually biking on the sidewalks because they don't feel that the roads are safe. So I don't know if there is an opportunity, and also I know that is a huge problem with parking. So how would that work with the bike access, or is it possible? I imagine it's not possible to create like a bike lane or, or something like that?
Yeah, so what's in the citywide bike and ped plan is actually a bike boulevard, so it's enhanced striping, it's, you know, helping with narrowing of lanes, traffic calming to really make it more bike friendly. So it's not an official bike path, but it's ways to help encourage people to ride their bike because car, we're, we're making cars go slower. So that's, that's how we, I guess, make it safer, is if people are driving slower, people are more likely to ride in the street.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess my last, my last question is around community engagement. It's great that there has been so much community engagement, and this is the plan that you have come up with, which is wonderful. Will, are we going to communicate with the community to say, okay, here it is, this is the plan, or what is the communication plan that we have for the community?
Yeah, there'll be some communication on, here's the plan. I mean, the ATP grants are very specific, you have to do conceptual drawings to show this exactly what we're doing, so there's not a lot of flexibility in that aspect. But I'd say a large portion, portion of the outreach will probably be on lighting, because part of the grant is proposing to do lighting along stark weather path. And so that, we need to do some sort of outreach component there to discuss with the community to, to see if that's something that they want. We, we did hear a huge out, there was a huge outreach done for lighting and people wanted it, but there's definitely part of the community who does not want lighting there. So there will be more outreach specifically focused on the type of lighting and what, what lighting we would propose, and, you know, how does that change with our, the hours that the park operates right now, because the sunrise is sunset. And so there'll be more discussions on that. I'd say that's the larger portion of outreach for this project.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I just have one follow-up question. I know when you were engaging or putting out the RFP for this, you referenced the Canal Transportation Plan to find the site. Did we look at any of the safe routes to school plans that have been done? I don't know how active Safe Routes is there, but I'm hoping that this prioritization, that they've been able to weigh in, or they're, we have information from them?
This, this grant was a very long time ago.
Oh, was?
I think, I think it was like 2021.
Oh, that's fair.
So I'm not sure if we did, there's different, we've had turnover since. There's improvements near the schools, so.
Okay, so maybe it's turning it around and, and letting the school community know the improvements that have been applied for and are now being received.
Correct, and one of our consultants that's on the project parametrics, they're, they work with Safe House to Schools, so we'll talk to them about different striping options or things that are already involved in the project to see how we could do any kind of improvements.
That would be fantastic. Great, thank you, Gray, thank you, Director. I will open up the public comment on this item, not seeing any other questions from the council. So if you're interested in providing your thoughts or questions, please share your name and where you live, you're not required to.
I live in the canal, in the condominium there, but I spend a lot of time in Maui. I don't get out too much in the canal, but I, I experienced the sea level rise with these atmospheric rivers. The water table is very low, you know, and that's a concern I have. And making sure that we adequately have infrastructure that will prevent the water from rising into our condominiums, that's, that's a question I have. Parking too. And also the Voces de Canal and others that live in the canal need to have a very strong input, making the decisions about how we proceed with this. And I, I really want that to be part of this, this movement for the enhancement of the traffic in the canal. You focused on spinner point before. One thought, and I don't know whether the Voces de Canal support this or not, but, you know, parking garage for trucks, the people using construction, you know, I don't know. Some way relieving the parking congestion, and we've worked on that before, but we need to work on it some more, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with him. You know, usually the, the canal, they're here in force, right? So it's shocking that they're not here, maybe they weren't notified or whatever, but I, I would imagine they'll chime in and, and do what they do best, so. I do wonder if there is a way to get a bike lane, you know, I even looked into that kind of stuff in other places, and, you know, you could have two-way traffic, just one travel lane and two-way traffic, or one-way, one-way, you know, one-way traffic. But, but the interesting idea, you know, in terms of, you know, I'm all for slowing down cars, but you have this, I guess you have this, if I understand this correctly, you have one basically lane, and then that's being used by, you know, two-way traffic. And one, if there's two cars going by each other, one's going to have to pull over kind of thing. I, I do wonder if that's possible. You know, the canal is a goldmine, right? It's like, it's, it's surrounded by water, which is maybe good and bad, but it's very beautiful, and, you know, this, this will ultimately get people out. But if people don't feel safe on those roads, if you got parked cars and if it's narrow and there's not a lot of space for those cars to pass, and you got two bikes and you got two cars, you got four things going on all at the same time, you know, I never want to be in that situation and see what happens. My guess is people do probab, I mean, parking is so hard out there, but my guess is people still get into their car and, you know, maybe drive down the street, I don't know, pickleweed or, or whatnot. I don't know this area perfectly. I think this project does a great job to take down that barrier of people just driving around and getting people out of their cars. Great job so far.
Thank you, any other comments? Not seeing any, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any closing comments on this, awarding this public professional services agreement. Any additional comments, Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll just say that it's great to see this move forward. I mean, the plan was in 2022, and in that plan, it referenced the Community-Based Transportation Plan of 2006. And at that time, it stated, a lot of these items are still these items and need to be done, and here we are in 2025. So now we're actually moving it forward. So this is just, this is the approval for the engineer now to do that work. So I'm glad we're moving it forward, and I would also just say, as a general, I mean, in reading the plan and the work that went into that plan, and it referenced all the neighborhood community studies that have already been done, we have a lot of data, we have a lot of literature that we don't need to recreate that wheel again until we start getting some work done. And so this is that step to get that work done, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, thank you, Gray and Director Miller for the presentation and taking our questions. I'm going to make comments, but I want to confirm, is this actually in our CIP? Or is this a separate thing altogether?
It's, it was in our, it was in our CIP and approved in the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Yeah, I'll just echo then Councilmember Kurtz, Kurtz's notion, which is that it is always exciting to watch something that has been in our CIP moving year inching forward that this one came to fruition in the time that we had envisioned as we came across in several years ago. So thank you for updating us on where we are and look forward to the next couple of years as it comes to fruition.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Yes, and again, thank you so much for the great report. You touched on everything that we needed to know, so that's wonderful. I, I'm, will keep my fingers crossed that everything is going to go well with PG&E, so we can actually, because I, I would hate for our project to be delayed because of that. And then, yeah, whatever we can do around the, the bike access and looking at, you know, sidewalks and parking and to make it safer. I know that the city has been going through so many community meetings about this project, so I, I agree that we, we have done a really good job with that. So it's more like notifying the community when it's going to happen to make sure everybody's aware, because this will be, this will have a big impact. And I'm sure PG&E will be doing a lot of communications too, so maybe we can tag along that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Gray, for the great report. Thank you, Director Miller. BKF looks like a good firm to be going with, and it's them and the other teams that will support, so this looks like the right people to get it done, and it's nice to have something actually done, moving from paper into the real world, so thank you. I would invite Councilmember Yurinskaladi to make a motion on this item.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with BKF Engineers to provide design and environmental services for the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project in the amount not to exceed 1.264,034.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero, thank you so much. Before we adjourn, we have open time for public expression. This is any comments from the public on anything not on tonight's agenda. You're welcome to express those sentiments now. Not seeing anyone racing down to the microphone. Appreciate you all for a great meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.